Good evenings, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee at the whole meeting for March 4th, 2014, discussing proposed budget review. I called this meeting to order and asked the clerk, please call the role.
Trustee Aaron's absent. Cameron?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. The only item on the agenda this evening is under Finance Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have the 2014-2015 proposed budget presentation. And with that, I will turn that over to staff.
Thank you, trustee Ranky. I have a couple of comments before we begin the overview of the budget with Finance Director. I want to make sure you understand the proposed budget this evening is balanced. It's a plan that's designated to keep our service levels constant and maintain our fund balance policies. In addition, it includes a reduction in our tax levy of $250,000 from last year's budget, which, if you'll recall, was a reduction as well. This represents the fifth year that we have kept our tax levy flat or reduced. The proposed budgets from the department directors were cut $567,085 before it arrived to you this evening. Our winter weather has impacted this year's budget significantly. Despite that, we were able to underspend this year's budget by $250,000. Overall, the proposed budget is $57,482,919, which is a 2.2 percent increase over last year's budget. The operating portion of the proposed budget totals $40,552,428, which is a 2.77 increase over last year's operating budget. Absent our Emeril Ashbore program, that increase would have been 1 percent. Our general fund revenues are projected to increase 1.08 since last year. From a longer perspective, our major revenues in the general fund have increased .58 since '08-'09, and the operating budget over that same timeframe has increased 1.25 percent. Assisting the budget this year, as we have talked about, is the liability insurance decrease of 16 percent. We continue to receive a substantial credit for our positive safety experience. Over the last five years, the village has received 1.8 million in experience modifier credits. This document proposes no new taxes, no new fees, no increase in water, no increase in sewer, and no use of developer deposits to fund operations. Finance Director now has a budget overview, and then we will begin our review of the individual departments.
Thank you, Valerie, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the Board of Trustees, staff of the village, and residents of the Village of Bartlett. It's my pleasure this evening to present the 2014-2015 operating budget. I'm sure at this time that you've had a chance for the last couple of weeks to take a look at our budget document. And as you probably noticed by now, the budget is much more than just a numbers document. The village uses four broad-based criteria to develop this budget document. That criteria is developed by the Government Finance Officers Association and the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting to assist governments in preparing budgets of the highest quality and transparency. So with that being said, I'd like to go over these four broad-based criteria that we use to develop this budget. The budget serves as a policy document. In the document, we have village-wide long-term financial policies, village-wide non-financial goals and objectives, such as our strategic plan, which both the Board and staff now has gone through. We also have clearly stated goals and objectives in each of the operating departments. The budget serves as a financial plan. In the document, we summarize our major revenues and expenditures. We have a detailed description of all of our major revenues, and we project major changes in fund balance for each of our five operating funds. The budget serves as an operations guide. We describe the activities, services, and functions of the village. We include an organizational chart and a personnel summary to show the village exactly how we operate and the chain of command within the village. And finally, the budget serves as a communication device. It defines who develops, prepares, reviews, and adopts the budget. Each of us has our own function, including the village board, with preparing and adopting this budget. The village administrator provides a detailed budget message to the Board of Trustees. Again, we define our financial policies, such as fund balance and our long-term capital planning, which we did, such as the capital improvement plan this past November. And finally, the budget includes statistical data to convey long-term information to the public. So again, this is what we use to put together the budget. We've been successful for the last 18 years in receiving the GFOA's distinguished budget award. We are one of 1,352 communities nationwide through Canada who receive this award, and we intend to apply for it again once it's adopted. So moving into the budget document, you can see that, you know, I put up here a budget calendar, and it's in your budget document, and really shows you the timeline of how this budget is adopted. Starting out, total expenditures are where the money goes. The total expenditures are $57.4 million. Capital projects represent 30 percent of this budget. Our debt service, general obligation bonds are 3 percent of the budget. The golf course is 5 percent. General government, which includes administration, finance, community development, building, and other operating divisions, represent 12 percent of the budget. Public safety is 23 percent of the budget. And finally, public works represents 27 percent of the total. On the flip side, where the money comes from, we have total revenues of $50.2 million, and it's broken down. Property taxes in this budget are 19 percent. Other taxes, such as sales tax, income tax, use tax, taxes like that, represent 33 percent of the budget. Our charges for service in our enterprise funds, water, sewer, parking, and golf are 25 percent. Interest income, which is not much nowadays, is 1 percent. Borrowings in our TIF funds are 1 percent. Other revenues in totality are 21 percent of the budget. Our operating versus our capital expenditures. Our operating expenditures this year are $40,552,482, and the capital portion of this budget is $13,303,187. On the operating side, here is shown is the green shaded area. We try to keep these expenditures as flat as we can, but our capital expenditures vary from year to year based upon those types of capital projects that are in the long-term The first area to review this evening is on the revenue side, and what we typically do here is review our major revenues. Again, proposed revenue is $50.2 million net of transfers. It's a 3.47 percent decrease. This is a seven-year history of total revenues, and the spikes that you see, these hills, are for different reasons, and they're mostly because of bond proceeds. In 2009, we issued our refunding bonds. In 2012, we had our road bond proceeds, which helped to increase revenue. And then last year, we had loan proceeds, grants, and capital projects in the water and sewer fund. Taking a look at really five major revenue sources that we have in the village, we did a comparison of where we were in 2008 and 2009 in these five revenues compared to this 2014-15 proposed budget. Overall, those total revenues are up $47,246, or .58 percent. The good news is we're starting to see growth again, especially in income tax, getting back to sales tax, and I'll get a little bit more into some of these other revenues as I move into this. First area of major revenue to review this evening is property taxes. Our budget for property taxes, which includes the general fund, police, and debt service, $9,692,526, 19 percent of total revenue. It represents a $323,295 decrease, or 3 percent from last year's budget. Again, this dollar amount includes levy for the general corporate, police, and debt service. The village's share of a property tax on a residence tax bill remains at approximately 9 percent, and we've been there for quite a while. We're seeing a decrease in the levy from the general fund and the police pension fund. In the general fund, we've reduced this budget levy by $250,000 from last year. It marks now the fourth year where we either had a property taxes in the general fund that have stayed stable or declining in that four-year period. In the police pension fund, we've seen a decrease in the need for property taxes because of the good experience and actuarial return that we've had in the pension fund. Yes?
Well, I have a question about number four. EAV is projected to decrease 4 percent due to falling home prices. Number one, I just read an article where at least DeKalb County, home values are on the rise.
Right.
And number two, how is the commercial development in Prairie?
Brewster Creek?
Thank you. How is that affecting our taxes?
Brewster Creek is in a TIF.
Brewster Creek.
Right. And because there's construction going on there, we do see an increase in property taxes that go into the TIF fund. As far as the residential home values, because we're on a three-year period.
Ah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got it.
The ever-confusing property tax system that we have. So that's why, in prior years, I think we've estimated a 6 percent decrease. Now we're down to 4 percent. I'm hoping it's less, because that'll flatten out our rate and maybe even lower it.
Because of the TIF recapture?
Yes, when that TIF expires.
At Brewster Creek?
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely. The estimated due page rate with this year's budget levy is $1 per $100 of EAV. The estimated cook rate in this budget is 94 cents per $100 of EAV. And again, it includes a $250,000 reduction in property taxes that we'll be levying this upcoming fall. So to review the timetable, once this budget is adopted, we come back and levy this back in November and December of next year, and then in 2015, we'll actually start collecting those taxes in the summer and fall of 2015 from both counties. Kind of a history of our tax rate in EAV. The cook rate, you can see over time, again, about 94 cents. Because we've kept the dollar amount flat or declining now, that rate has kind of leveled off, which is a good thing, and as EAVs go up, you'll see that even decrease a little bit more in the rate. Same thing on the DuPage County side. And here is about a 10-year history of our EAV. You can see that around 2009 was the highest amount of EAV that the village had, and in 2014, and years prior to that, we've seen a decrease. Hopefully, it's leveling off a little bit more, and we'll see that get back to 2009 levels. We're now under $1 billion, estimated, where we used to be up over $1.6 billion in EAV. Income tax, we have a $4,042,750 budget, 8 percent of total revenue. It's a nice $117,750 increase, or 3 percent from last year. We receive income taxes from the state, and it's based upon a per capita rate that the Illinois Municipal League estimates for us, and we're at about $97.80 per capita, multiplied by our current population. IML has raised their projection by eight and a half percent for 2013 and another 6 percent for 2014. So as this fiscal year ends, we've had a nice increase in income tax, and they're projecting another increase for next year, and we were able to take advantage of that in this year's budget. You'll probably remember in 2012, our income taxes went up by about 66 percent. The village does not receive any portion of that new income tax. We're still under the old rate. In years past, we actually used to be five months behind in receiving income tax from the state. We're down to two months, so the cash flow from the state's got, has become a little bit better. So this is definitely a revenue source that's stabilized out a little bit and is coming back.
Jeff, is that supposed to be 6 percent versus .06 percent?
It's .06 percent. Not sure why they were so low. I think by the end of this proposed fiscal year, it's going to be a little bit more than that.
So that's six hundredths of one percentage point?
Right.
That's zero.
Local use tax, we have a budget of $720,500, 1.4 percent of total revenue, $70,000 increase, or 11 percent from last year's budget. Again, this is another per capita revenue source where we receive revenue based upon a per capita projection of $17.80. The use tax is a form of sales tax where goods purchased and delivered from outside of Illinois are taxed. This has exponentially increased over the last four years. So we've seen this go from about a half million dollars about four years ago all the way up to $720,000. Also, Illinois implemented a voluntary pay program from internet sales. So when you go file your tax returns, you have that voluntary option to pay local use tax based upon your internet purchases. So as April 15 rolls around, just remember that.
But the local, this other one, just rundown on the $720,500, that's online sales as well, correct?
Online sales and any types of goods that are, or whatever those are, that are purchased outside of Illinois. Sales tax, we have a projected budget of $2,075,000. It's 4 percent of total revenue. We're projecting a $65,000 increase, or 3 percent from last year. The Village, Village of Bartlett, receives a 1 percent tax on purchases made within the village. This tax is collected by the state of Illinois. Yes?
What do you base that $65,000 figure on?
Slight growth. We've seen sales tax, slight growth. We've seen sales tax now increase each year in the last two years. Not to skip ahead, I'm hoping that Dominix doesn't impact this too much, so.
So this is a critical figure? Yes? No?
The sales tax. But again, our state sales tax is collected by the state and remitted to us three months in arrears. We have one sharing agreement where we used to have four, and that sales tax sharing agreement is currently with Welch, and you'll see that expenditure in the Community Development Department under rebates. And again, as we just discussed, there's some uncertainty with Dominix, so we hope that as the year progresses, we can meet this figure.
That agreement expired, though, didn't it?
Dominix expired. We had Abel RV and Welch. We still have, I'm saying about five years to go on that. That's the only one left. Telecommunications tax, we have a $1.3 million budget, represents 3 percent of our total revenue. It's a $75,000 decrease, or 5 percent from the prior year. The village collects a 6 percent tax on land and cellular service. Similar to sales tax, the state collects it and remits it back to the village. We're seeing a reduction over the past three years in telecommunications tax, and this is probably the third year where we've had to decrease telecommunications budget. It's probably because we have so many packages now where you have unlimited texting and data service. So I hope that stables out, but I think this year, we had to take that hit. Real estate transfer tax, we have a $410,000 budget, represents .08 percent of total revenue. We're projecting a $100,000 increase, or 32 percent from this current year budget. We are seeing things starting to pick up, such as we talked about earlier in the presentation, in the number of homes that are sold, and based upon projections from this year, I think this is an appropriate increase. Yes?
Why did you choose fiscal year '05-'06?
We wanted to point out here that this is a revenue source that has severely declined from '05-'06. '05-'06 was the high point in our transfer tax, and we've gone from 1.6 million down to $410,000 in that timeframe, so it's pretty substantial.
And if you compare it to year from last year, is it still decreasing?
Oh, it's increasing. It's increasing from last year by about $100,000. That's what we're projecting.
I think it was like $600,000 or something.
Yeah.
Or $480,000.
Our budget last year was only about $310,000, but I think this current year, we're projecting it to be substantially more than what it was budgeted for. And again, you can see that, you know, we are down from prior years, and '05-'06 is The natural gas utility tax, we have a $1,095,000 budget, represents 2 percent of our total revenue. We're projecting a $40,000, or 4 percent increase from the '13-'14 budget. Currently, we have a tax that's 5 cents per therm, and it comes out to about 5 percent on a residential tax bill, is what we're seeing now in the second full year that we've had the gas utility tax. We think we're in a good position to generate more money this year on it because of the, you know, extremely harsh winter, so, you know, we budgeted for an increase in that area. Yeah, TL.
I'm sorry. I know we've had somewhat of a rainfall because the weather has been so cold. Is there any time in the next fiscal year that we can say, okay, we've got X number of dollars in surplus, let's refund it in some way, or can we do that?
I think if that's the policy of the Board and the direction that the Board would want to go, we can certainly take a look at that at a six-month review.
Well, it may not be, but I mean, is there a reasonable process by which we can do
Right now, if we have a surplus in the general fund that exceeds our minimum and maximum, our policy says that we can put it into a municipal building fund, a capital projects fund, and use it for those projects.
But that's not actually getting it back to the taxpayers.
Right.
Directly.
I wish that there were a process that we could do that. Our expected income is X, and because of the cold weather, we're getting X plus four, or X plus three, or whatever.
You're talking about the cap?
If we could rebate in some way, I think that would be a good idea.
Cap it at a certain level?
Off?
Cap it. That's what you're talking about. Anything over that goes back.
Okay. Thank you.
On the other hand, on that, TL, our trustee Aaron's, there's added expenses, too. So, you know, we get extra funds from the utility tax, but we've got public works expenses that are off the charts.
Right. Yeah, we'll get more into it, but overall, revenues only increased 1 percent in the general fund while we had, you know, some pretty good requests that we unfunded again, so. Moving on to the electric utility tax, we have a $610,000 budget, 1 percent of total revenue, slight $10,000 or 2 percent increase from last fiscal year. The electric usage is a per kilowatt hour on residential and commercial use. The rates are dictated by state statute, and there's a total of 10 kilowatt hour rates and are charged based upon usage. So the more a consumer uses, the less the rate will be. That's how it works, so it's a kind of a declining rate. And it was set up where the village would ask to generate $600,000, and that's the rate the state would set us at. So there's not a lot of flexibility there. We just kind of told the state what we wanted to generate, and that's the rates they set us at. Moving on to some of our enterprise fund revenues. Our water sales, we have a $6.8 million budget, 13 percent of total revenue, $50,000 increase, or 1 percent from this current year. Revenue is based upon our consumption estimates, and this budget assumes 1.06 billion gallons will be billed, and we're projecting a slight increase in consumption of 1 percent. Our average residential monthly water bill with the proposed rates in this budget is $38.16 based upon 6,000 gallons of usage per month. And again, we do not have an anticipated rate increase for the 2014-15 budget, meaning our rates, we think, are set accordingly to meet our expenses.
You could budget that a lot closer if you'd figure out how many teenage girls are in each household. I know my daughter uses about 1/6th in gallons a month.
Boys.
Oh, you're getting off easy, then. I was going to ask you a serious question, Jeff, on the water sales. With Rana and some of these other organizations out there using so much water, have we factored that into our budget?
Yes.
Just the additional usage? I know they use thousands of gallons a week, right?
Right. We've seen an increase in water consumption and water revenue. In 2012, we had the major drought. But in '13, in this proposed budget, we're bringing it back to where we think normal consumption lies, but we did factor in an increase for Rana, and that was even in last year's budget, too.
Okay.
And any other new development that comes in.
Well, cheese manufacturers will use just as much.
Right.
Cheese merchants.
Didn't factor that in because we're still in the process.
It's not going to be open. Don't frown.
How do you know that?
I was cringing.
But that helps our minimum numbers that we have to buy, right? We've got a contract, we have to buy so many.
We have, yeah, we have no problem meeting those minimums, even with the volume that we have now. Our water revenue history, it's a 10-year history, and looking at 2012, again, as I was saying, that's the drought year. We had a really great year and generated a lot of additional revenue, and we're able to put now that additional revenue into some capital projects in the water fund. But you can see now that in 2013, this current year, we're back down kind of to normal consumption based upon regular volume, and in 2014, we're estimating it to be, you know, right around 1.06 billion gallons of consumption. And taking a look at our water revenues, right around 2009-10, we had a pretty good decrease, and that was because of the recession. We're now getting back up to about $6.8 million of revenue, so there's some good growth there, along with keeping rates in line without any water rate increases now. I think it's going to be the last three fiscal years. Looking at our sewer sales, in the sewer fund, we have a $3.2 million budget, 6 percent of total revenue, just a $5,000 increase, or basically zero from last fiscal year. Sewer, the sewer fund and sewer sales, we have very stable types of projections. Approximately 15 percent of sewer sales is from fixed rate charges, where conversely, in the water fund, it's based 100 percent on consumption. Average residential monthly sewer bill by county, Cook and Kane, is $13.83. $13.83. $13.83. Average residential monthly sewer bill by county, Cook and Kane, is $13.83 per month, and in DuPage, it's $22.49 per month. Remember, in Cook County, sewer charges go on the property tax bill. And again, no anticipated rate increases in 2014-2015. Looking at our golf revenues, total budget at the golf course of $1,282,900, 2.5% of total revenue. We're budgeting a $41,250 decrease, or 3% from last year. We've dropped the anticipated number of rounds at the golf course from 38,000 to 37,000. Again, it's a $1,000 decrease from last year because of just what we're seeing in the golf industry. Our golf revenues in total are down in this projected budget by 3%, and our pro shop sales are down by 10% from the '13-'14 budget. Revenue generators from the strategic plan that we talked about are not built into this budget, so there's some additional opportunities possibly as we move into the year, and as we say every year, we need good weather. It's pretty critical for the golf course. Food and beverage revenue, $966,000 budget, 2% of total revenue, and we're down 48,000 or 5% from the prior year. This current year budget estimated a decrease of 6% in food and beverage sales, which reflects an industry-wide downturn in banquet sales. So, for some reason, we are seeing a decrease in that sector. Where about three or four years ago, we actually saw a little bit of an increase, so. I know Paul, and there's been, Paul Peterson, and there's been a number of ideas that we're running with, and hopefully, again, we can put those to work and see some of these numbers increase in that sector. Finally, our development and building permit revenue, $435,600 budget, 0.86% of total revenue. We're budgeting a $44,400 increase, or 11% from last year. We're seeing some good residential permits come in, some other commercial developments that are coming in. Right now, we're using a three-year average to project building permit revenue. I think that's worked out pretty good the last couple of years. It's still conservative, and we're coming in actually over budget the last two years in building permit revenue. We continue to plan conservatively and not bring on developments or budget for those developments that haven't been approved by the board before the budget is adopted. Projected number of new residential permits in this budget is five, and our residential permits that we think we'll issue are about 2,100.
I think there were six issued last year, is that right?
Yeah.
So, it's up to 21, and 17 of those will be in that new development?
Well, that's right, and we had, when we put this together, it really is in November, early December, and didn't have that information about the 17 new homes, so that is not accounted for in here.
It's a 38.
Yeah.
Possibly, but until they're approved, we really don't, we don't budget for them.
Okay. We can approve them tonight.
Only if they start building. Moving on to the expenditure side, and with it being, getting close to 7 o'clock, our operating departments are going to start presenting, so I'll try to move through this a little more quickly, it won't be as long as the revenue side. Our proposed operating expenditures are, again, are $40.5 million, or 2.77% increase. This is a 10-year chart that shows the history of our operating expenditures, and we're keeping it, keeping it right around $40 million or so for the last couple of years, and we've been at or below that. So, it's been a pretty steady, stable operating expenditure budgets for the last several years. Our operating expenditures by type, personnel services in this budget are 52% of the total, contractual service represents 21%, our commodities are 5%, other charges are at 18%, and our capital outlay is at 4%. Our operating expenditures by department, the golf course represents 6% of the total, debt service, general obligation, bonds, principal and interest are 5%. Public works is 38%, public safety 32%, and general government 19% of the total budget. We wanted to take a look at our operating expenditure history in the general fund. Since 2008-2009, compared to the '14-15 budget, in total, with all the operating departments, we're up 4.3%, and as Valerie said, on average, that's about 1.25% over the last five years. So, I think we've held the line to some degree on operating expenses, and this year's budget shows that same trend. Public works operating expenditures, streets are 27%, water is 48%, sewers at 23%, and our parking fund is at 2% of total public works expenditures. Those four operating departments are $15.2 million. It represents, again, 38% of the total operating budget. We're projecting an $802,000 increase, or 5.6% increase from last year's budget. Some of the highlights that Paul will be talking about, we've included an additional $327,500 for tree replacement and trimming due to the Emerald Ash Bore program that we approved earlier last year. This is the third year of our road replacement program, and our streets department just received bids, as I understand it, and will be in full force again to finish up that program come the spring and summer. And we'll be working on well number eight, beryium and radium removal in the water fund. Our public safety department expenditures, two areas here, our police department is 84%, and our police pension fund is 16% of total expenditures in the public safety.
Is this typical of all municipalities?
No.
What's that?
The ratio of 84% to 16% police pension?
It's, that's hard to say, depending on the size of the pension fund and the size of the police department. Some municipalities have smaller pension funds and lower expenses because they don't have as many officers that have been on pension, and we have sometimes smaller budgets. So, that's a tough ratio to kind of compare, so. I know it's a bad answer, but it's, trying to get an apples to apples out of that is a little hard. Police department expenditures, including police pension, is $13.1 million. Again, it's 32% of total expenditures. We budgeted a $286,148 increase, or 2% from last year. Some of the highlights in the police department, we'll continue annual funding and replacement of two patrol vehicles and six other vehicles in the amount of $232,000. Kent and his staff continues to utilize grant funding for DUI and vehicle speed enforcement, and continued funding for community relations such as National Night Out, and the chief will have plenty of other highlights to discuss with you this evening. General government, administration represents 21% of the total. Professional services, where our legal fees and our engineering fees come out of are 9%, liability insurance is 9%, finance department, including IT and human resources, is 23%, community development 17%, our building department at 14%, and the Brewster Creek Municipal Fund is at 7%. General government in total, $7.6 million, 19% of total again. We're budgeting a $134,164 decrease, or 1.7% from last year, and that's mainly attributable to the decrease we've seen in our liability insurance costs. We still are predicting good loss experiences, and the rate that we're paying to our liability insurance carriers decrease, so we're able to take advantage of those lower costs. Finally, in the golf course, our expenditures by program, the golf program is 36%, golf maintenance at 27%, the driving range at 1%, restaurant 12%, banquet 22% of expenditures, and the midway 2%. The golf program in total is $2.6 million, or 6.4% of total. We're projecting a $96,809 decrease, or 3.6% from last year. Some of the highlights in the golf course, to try and save money at the golf course, we've suspended again. The golf course is transferred to central services and vehicle replacement, and we've done that for the last four years. The capital outlay, the necessary capital outlay, such as an HVAC system, midway improvements, clubhouse flooring and banquet chairs, we're not taking that out of the golf course, we're going to do a transfer from the municipal building fund to help fund those necessary improvements. And we have budgeted directly in the municipal building fund renovations to the clubhouse in the amount of $250,000. So, that concludes really the expenditure portion of this. So, to kind of take a look at the highlights or a budget snapshot, we are seeing some revenue stability. Last two years, we haven't seen any, a decrease in our total revenues in any of our operating funds, and that includes no new taxes or fees. We're funding $644,500 from the vehicle replacement fund, from funds that were set aside from prior years. New personnel, we have one new operator in the sewer department that we're requesting, and it also includes full funding of two new police officers that were approved in last year's budget. Again, no water sewer rate increases, no use of our developer deposits fund, which is a capital projects fund, to fund our operating costs. Full funding of the three-year Emerald Ash Bore program starts this year, and we've also included funds, again, from the municipal building fund, for a police facility study. Professional development was cut in all departments, and that includes any out-of-state conferences. And in conclusion, probably, the most important part, I think, of this presentation is to get an understanding of our operating funds, our fund balance, which is really defined as the equity in our, in our four major operating funds. Starting out with the general fund, we have a policy of 25% to 35% of operating expenditures that we set aside, and also the average increase in our property tax levy and our liabilities, and some other designated reserves. In each of the four years, 2013-14 is the current, 14-15 is the proposed, and we project out two years in the future what our fund balance will be, or our reserve. In the middle, the purple bars represent what our estimated fund balance is. So, for 13-14, we're projecting $12.9 million. And those purple bars, in each year, going out to 16-17, meet both the minimum and maximum that are derived from our policy. So, our general fund is within policy limits to meet our fund balance reserve, and we have the option to set some dollars aside in the municipal building fund to possibly pay for necessary capital projects. We are above the limits that we need to be at, which is a good thing. We have a very healthy general fund reserve. The water fund, again, same, basically the same principle. We reserve 25% to 35% of our operating expenditures, and we have certain designated reserves. Again, we project out current, projected year, and two years into the future. The middle bar, which is kind of dark, is the projected reserve, and we are both meeting the minimum and maximum. Same thing holds true in the sewer fund, same type of policy. The middle bars, again, meet both the minimum and maximum, set aside for our reserve, and we're able to use those to fund necessary capital outlay projects. And finally, at the golf course, we have a simple policy, 10% of operating expenditures. I think this policy was revised about 10 years ago, and that was because then we were still having trouble meeting our fund balance policy, and to this day, we still are. Talked a little bit about some of the struggles the golf course has had. Unfortunately, we don't have a reserve at that point. We do rely on a short-term interfund loan from the general fund by the end of the year, and that's typically paid back when a golf rounds and the golf course opens up, so that's where we're at.
We skipped sewer.
I did sewer, didn't I do sewer? I went through it pretty quick.
Oh, did you? Okay. You're quick for me.
That concludes my presentation for the evening. As Valerie said, the departments will move into discussion of their operating departments, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Quick question, Jeff, on the general fund, which obviously is the largest of all of them. Is there a reason why we even use the terminology minimum and maximum when we're well over the maximum?
I think the best answer is because we have a policy in place, but we, yes, you are correct, we are over the minimum and maximum, and that gives us some flexibility.
So, technically speaking, those minimums and maximums were set up for the reason of maintaining that we don't have too much funds in that particular.
Right.
But is it safe to say that that's there because we anticipate other capital expenditures that can come up that would blow it down below the minimum?
Yeah, and what we'd like to do is if we get above the minimum and maximum, we transfer that additional money into the municipal building fund. Now, when the recession came, 2007-2008, we weren't able to do that, because we were having just a tough time breaking even, we were cutting costs, and concerned that if the recession got so bad that we'd be running operating deficits and drawing down our fund balance. Obviously now, we've seen some stability. We still have a hard time balancing the budget, however, we're not running deficits, and we do have a healthy reserve.
I would just suggest that maybe we revisit what that term maximum means when we're so far over it. I mean, if we think that that should be the maximum where we're at?
Right.
For future safety?
Right.
Then let's use that. This doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, the minimum and maximum, really, the minimum is 25% of our operating expenditures, and the maximum is 35% of our operating expenditures. I think with this proposed budget and our estimated fund balance, we're around 55%. So, what we'd probably like to do is transfer money into that municipal building fund from the general fund, set that aside. They'll bring down the fund balance and put it more in line with those minimum and maximum levels that are dictated by the policy.
And set it up for some of the capital improvements that you were talking about?
Yeah, we think that's a good plan.
The municipal building fund, that sounds like a good idea to me.
It's actually the board's policy that we do that.
Okay.
That you take any beyond that and send them to...
One other quick question for you, Jeff, is, I'm sorry, what are you doing?
It's okay.
I'm sorry. It would help me, anyway, when we start comparing operating expenditures with other years.
Uh-huh.
I think operating expenditures is somewhat a direct relation to how many, how many residents we're serving.
Okay.
So, when we go all the way back to 2005-2006, I'd have, really have no comparison as to how many residents we're attempting to serve then as now. So, it seems to me that when it comes to operating expenses, and tell me if I'm wrong, this should, it should only increase more than the cost of living when the population increases.
Well, I guess...
Generally speaking.
Generally speaking, but you always have...
Improved technology and...
And requests for public safety, or streets, and things like that.
Yeah.
I can tell you in the last 10 years, our population's been right around 41,000.
Yeah, if you back to 2005-2006.
Yeah, we haven't seen a big spike in population in about eight to 10 years.
So, it's safe to say that if we look at some of the expenditures, we'd have to kind of figure out why some of those expenditures increased based on the same number of people in town? Like, what additional value did we bring to them, is what I'm getting at.
Oh, yeah, we can go year by year and show why we've increased those years and what the reasons for that were.
Well, that's just the way that my mind works, and we're serving 41,000... And we're serving 41,000 people in 2005, 2006, or say we're, you know, 200, 300,000 more in 2014, but we're serving the same number of people, what happened?
Well, you have inflationary increases.
Yeah, each year.
Which we think, each year, we think is reasonable. But we have requests for additional police officers, or additional street personnel or whatnot, to maintain services. And that's really what we always try to balance, is how to maintain or increase services while keeping those costs lower.
Sure. Yeah. I think that would be helpful for me, anyway, to kind of understand that, especially if we go all the way back.
Right.
And if we know the population is the same, then I can actually equate that to the same number of residents we're serving, you know?
In the budget document, in the budget summary section, there's a personnel history and a population history
Oh.
that will show you
I was gonna miss that.
Yeah. How many employees that we had per capita, and statistics like that, so...
Okay.
That's all I have.
You did that on purpose so they didn't have to, so the department heads didn't have to come up and ran it all the way to seven o'clock for you guys.
That's pretty good. I, yeah. I'm usually going over.
Are we going to try to push through and go over a couple of the departments? Are we going to adjourn now for...
We're gonna have your board meeting now.
Is that all you have, Mr. President?
That's it.
All right.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Jeff, for that presentation, very thorough. I love the graphics. We may want to rethink the purple and the pink a little bit, but that's okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved by second.
Trustee Cameron, seconded by trustee Ranky, but clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron.
Here.
Cameron.
Yes.
Carbonero.
Yes.
Martin.
Here.
Ranky.
Yes.
Chipman.
Yes.
For adjourn. No. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll consider this an extension of the earlier committee of the whole meeting. We'll call the committee of the whole meeting back into order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Here. Cameron.
Here.
Carbonero.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Chipman.
Here.
President Wallace.
Present. Again, we'll kind of pick up where we left off, the committee of the whole meeting, under finance committee, and I will ask that trustee Ranky get us going here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Why don't we return to the budget relative to the police department?
Let me, let me just tell you, we'll start with the police department tonight. We have a very scientific lottery system that is in place that selects who goes first and who goes next, and that will be applied this evening. And the police department, lucky as they are, will go first.
Good evening. On behalf of the men and women of the Bartlet Police Department, I'm humbled and honored to be here this evening to walk you through the requested budget for fiscal year 14-15. I'll try and hit on some of the highlights, and some of the major changes, and some of the major requests. I'll move along as briskly as I can, and please understand, this is your budget. You can slow me down and ask questions any time along the way. That being said, this budget represents an ongoing relationship we have with the Village of Bartlet and the board, and a highly supported relationship. This is a request for both administration and operations. Administration includes investigations, detectives, school liaison officers, drug enforcement officers, and operations, records sections, crossing guards, emergency management, and the court liaison program, whereas operations includes the patrol, traffic unit, planning and research accreditation, crime prevention, DARE, directed patrol, and the K-9 unit, and training. That being said, overall, there's a request for a 4 percent increase in the budget over 13-14. This budget has no request for additional personnel, and primarily, the 4 percent will be primarily attributed to costs and personnel services. The original budget request, as presented to you this evening, includes $296,000 worth of cuts to the vehicle replacement program, and that'll be outlined as we go along. Some of the highlights this past year, and there were many, revolve around the village's strategic plan of community safety, and to promote safety within the village. And one big action step towards that this year was, we implemented an intelligent-based directed patrol team, and that was created with a promotion of a sergeant last year's budget, and an acquisition of another officer, and we rearranged the command structure a little bit, and we created a team of officers led by a sergeant and a crime, a computer crime specialist who crunches the numbers for us. And those team officers work on a daily basis under both patrol and investigations, and they utilize these, a numbers-based crime analysis in order to direct and target problem hotspot areas in the community. To say that this program has been a success would be an understatement. They made some tremendous impacts on quality of life in neighborhoods. They made many nuisance narcotic investigation arrests, many warrant service arrests, and they are on a first-name basis with our frequent flyers in the community, and have really been lauded by the community as well. So that's been an outstanding success this year. They have continued to suppress illegal drug activity and usage in town. They've served numerous search warrants, and they operate in both in overt and covert We've developed and promoted a community-wide training regarding various issues related to the concealed carry law this year. Obviously, that was a big change for the state of Illinois, and concealed carry is now the law of the land, and we've done in-house training on that, as well as begun our community training for any businesses in the Chamber of Commerce. As a matter of fact, Paula and I and Valerie have set up a Chamber of Commerce training for, I believe, the 20th of this month at the Bartlet Library, that we anticipate will be well-attended. We continue to utilize a highly-trained cybercrime investigator in-house, who works hand-in-hand with the FBI and other federal services, as well as hand-in-hand with other local departments. He's considered a standout in the law enforcement community throughout the Midwest. He's attached to several multi-jurisdictional task force, and he's considered a leader in that. He's also an MCAT, Major Crimes Assistance Team Coordinator for Forensics in the Computer Analysis, and he's been a big part of this directed patrol initiative as well, that has been so successful. We continue to support our CIT team, which stands for Crisis Intervention. Several years ago, in the economic downturn, we saw a true shift in law enforcement throughout the nation, but particularly in Bartlet, where the resources for mental health were cut, and therefore, many of our police contacts became, associated with people who were in need of mental health care. We put a team together. We were one of the first departments to do so. It's called Crisis Intervention. These officers get trained early and often extensively, and ways to properly mitigate and de-escalate situations involving people who are suffering from a mental health crisis. We have entered into a vendor relationship with a very respected mental health provider in the area, Dr. Kami Joswin, who serves as consultant for this team, and they are a very busy team, and they're a very successful team. What we found is we've been able to reduce our arrests and our recidivism, incidents of recidivism in families who are in a distressed nature because of their mental health issues, and we've been able to refer them to many of the relationships we've been able to develop with all the mental health care providers in the area. And that's just been a really shining success this year. It's been an example of other departments, and our department is known for training and mentoring other departments that choose to get these programs up and going. The police department expect, we continue to look for all grants available. Last year, we received $42,872 in grant revenues that was allocated towards curtailing underage sales of alcohol and tobacco to minors within the Village of Bartlet, and it also helps to subsidize our extra patrols for seatbelt usage, speed compliance, and to curtail driving under the influence of alcohol. The overtime monies that we expend on that to fund those details are reimbursed, and those sales, that money expended goes back into the general fund for the village. We upgraded and improved the village's Emergency Operations Center, which is located in the lower level of the police department. We were able to acquire a BDA, which is a bidirectional amplifier that allows all cellphones, whoever may be, regardless of your provider, when they come into the EOC, your cellphone will work down there, and we have found in natural disasters or in severe weather, that's a huge plus. We've improved our ability to receive news from outside organizations in the EOC, and we've added two Starcom mobile radios to the area that are interoperable throughout the state. Some of the strategic plans to continue to promote community identity and events, as we were celebrated several weeks ago, we took third place in National Night Out. We don't take that lightly. My staff was, quite frankly, disappointed. They thought for sure that they were going to come up number one, and I think they deserved it. However, I think they have to spread the wealth a little bit, or everybody would stop playing. So we took that humbly, and we were honored to receive it. That has become a fixture of our department's relationship with this community, and we look forward to it on an annual basis. And that couldn't take place without the support of the board, and we do truly appreciate that. I'm gonna go down to page three on the right-hand side. Continue to work with local, state, and federal levels to enforce illegal narcotics. We do so both through directed patrols. We have an in-house TAC unit that does nuisance abatement-level drug sales in town. They're very successful and very busy. And we have also an officer who works both state and federal levels, who is very busy and very productive as well. This kind of gives me pause. It's a sad moment in our history. This will be the last year of service for our K-9 Brewster. Brewster has had eight years of outstanding service. He has won many medals, along with Officer Kamesik. They make an absolute professional powerhouse of a team. They're recognized throughout our area as one of the better, and better if not best teams in the area. They train other teams. Officer Kamesik teaches in the academy, and he teaches at the, for other K-9 handlers. And Brewster is, has a very long resume of outstanding service to this village in both narcotics detention, detection, and acquisition, suspect capture, suspect identification, lost children, autistic lost people. And we will be preparing a ceremony for his retirement, but this will be his last year. Just recently, he was released from the handler on a very violent felon who was escaping and required a release, and it was kind of touch and go there for a while, whether he was going to catch the offender or not. It was fun, kind of fun to watch, but over the ravine and through the woods, and he went to chase, went about a block or two longer than we were used to, but he eventually caught up to him, and thank God, the felon was in bad shape, worse than Brewster, and he was able to bring him down for us, and we brought him into custody, but we all applauded him. He still gives it all he's got, he really does. But he's eight years old, and that's a lot of years of service for a very active athlete like a K-9. So you'll see a request for a new K-9 unit in this year's budget as well. Officer Sweeney took Officer of the Year this year for his outstanding work, both through directed patrol, and he also won a Meritorious Service Award for the Cook County Sheriff's Department for his outstanding police performance this last year. And our records clerk, our civilian Officer of the Year, was a veteran records clerk by the name of Susan Angelikos, who really stepped up and showed a lot of leadership this year when we were in search of a new records supervisor. Officer Kyle Ribaski was promoted to Sergeant at this year, and he took over patrol command, a patrol shift as a supervisor. He's doing outstanding, and this allowed Officer Sergeant Naidenoff to take over for the directed patrol team. We work internally with the village staff. We do a continuous internal safety audit within the Village of Bartlet. We take our personnel's safety very seriously, and we did some drills this year on how to lock down the facility and keep our staff safe in the event of an unpredictable customer that might come in unannounced. That went very well, and we will continue those efforts to ensure everybody's safety to the utmost of our capability. Some of our narcotics investigations led to two seizures of vehicles which have been placed into the fleet, and we use those as unmarked undercover surveillance vehicles, and that's proved very successful. And our police department was a standout this year in tackling the scourge of heroin abuse and fatalities in the tri-county area. The DuPage County Chiefs of Police Association tasked our department to chair the response of all the chiefs of police in DuPage County, and that led to a widely disseminated video of a family, a local family, who was impacted by heroin. That video's been disseminated not only throughout our area, but throughout the state and the nation, and it's led to a template that has been used to train various high schools and middle schools throughout Illinois. In addition to that, we were the, one of three originating departments that took on the Narcan program, which Narcan is an antidote to a heroin overdose, and we trained up our officers in our department, and all our officers carry Narcan in squad cars because seconds mattered, not unlike the AEDs during a heart attack event. And we were one of the first, the first department to have that in patrol vehicles, and now it's become commonplace in DuPage County and other states, and other jurisdictions and counties throughout the state are looking to our template to take that on, and it's being copied throughout the nation as we speak. So we're very proud of that. That moves us on to page five, which is the overall police summary. And on the right, you'll see the changes. The top part is the budget, and you'll see a lot of that is personnel. Again, you'll see the vehicle replacement allocation was cut from the original request of over 528,000 down to 232, which is actually a reduction from last year. And there is no request for additional staff this year. It remains at 75 and a half. How do you get a half a person? That would be a part-time employee in records. And as we go through activity measures, most of that stays fairly consistent. You'll see a tremendous jump in traffic enforcement, and what we've just done there to let you know is we've moved from just simple traffic arrests to all traffic contacts, to include citations and warnings. And that's why you see such a dramatic increase there. We just included more information in it. If you move on to page six, that begins the request for capital. And items one and two are a normal part of our vehicle replacement program. They're planned for and anticipated. These vehicles, these first five are high mileage and heavy-used by patrol, and we get to the point where the warranties are out because of the high mileage, and they require tremendous service. It gets very expensive, and we don't want to push the fleet too much farther than 83,000 miles because you lose your resale value in the secondary market. So that would take, that would be on items one and two, the five vehicles in total. Two is a little, we're moving from the sedans to the SUVs. The sedans are a smaller, downsized version of the old typical squad car, and because of that, there was, excuse me, a request for three utilities, and that would be for two-man patrol vehicles, such as the FTO cars, where there's a senior officer training a new recruit, or, and we do have some officers pushing six and a half feet tall, and they appreciate the ability to move into a little slightly larger vehicle, so we're going to make that an accommodation. Number three is a 2005. The vehicle will be about 10 years old by the time we do replace it, and it's been deferred a year already, so we've, we're going to go ahead and replace that one. Number four, again, is a 10-year-old patrol command vehicle, which is a very large truck. We look forward to downsizing it into the smaller utility vehicle by Ford, the Ford Interceptor, what we think will get much better gas mileage. Number five was deferred and not funded. That was traffic utility. We're going to push that squad another year to 2008 with 52,000 miles. The administration, number six, is an administrative vehicle used often. It's got very high mileage. It'll probably be closer to, yeah, the mid-90s, and it's a 2006, so that's due for replacement. Number seven, both community service officer trucks were due. They're 2009s with 84,000 miles, but we do believe because those are heavy-duty truck engines, we can push that, those both beyond a year, beyond their normal replacement, and we can save that off this year's budget. So we're going to defer those till, and we'll take a look at them next year. Number eight was not funded. Again, it's a 2000... Again, it's a 2009 with 46,000 miles. That's a low-mileage vehicle. We're going to push it another year and defer that one. Number nine is Verizon Truck Modems. Those are the ways that police, police vehicles are able to communicate with their automated report management system. Those are the tool that sits in the trunk, and when the squad car gets close to a hotspot, it transfers the information from the squad car to our reporting system, and it automatically downloads that. And we're just going to, we're not going to replace the whole fleet. We're just going to do those as we get the new, roll those out with the new fleet as they come in. Number 10 is the final L3 in-car video surveillance system, which we're replacing parts of it to keep it modern and usable without having to replace the whole system, which would be about $6,000 if we did that. So, once we do that and upgrade this, the whole system, all the squad cars will have upgraded video surveillance systems. Number 11 is Brewster's replacement. That's the police K-9 with the training, and that is requested for this year's budget. Number 12 is a two-factor authentication. It's $27,000. That's a federal requirement. Information that is able to be obtained by the squad cars through their computer systems. They have sensitive, private, protected, law enforcement-only information, and squad cars, the federal government, they do not refer to them as secure locations like they would a police records division. Therefore, under federal law, they are required to have two-factor authentification and verification to prevent any misuse or anybody getting into a squad car. That's a federal mandate that's new, and the IT department has been following that, and that is thus number 12. 13 was not funded. 14 is additional surveillance cameras. Those are small pinhole, excuse me, covert camera systems used by our investigations unit that assists us to, for continuous nuisance complaints from neighbors who say they're being constantly picked on or victimized, and rather than having a police officer set up all night for surveillance, we can put these on their property, and they can monitor the specific property that has requested, requested the surveillance. And that helps us. We download it, and if there is any damage, itch, we can go straight to that point and look for any offender information or evidence we can of the crime. That's highly requested by this village, and we utilize those often. 15 is just some repairs to some 20-year-old furniture. 16 is not funded. We found a potential for a grant to fund that, and we're researching that. We have high hopes that that'll be funded through a Cook County grant, and it gives us also time. It's called e-ticketing. That's a way, it's a database inside squad cars that allow the officer to automatically, as they're writing the ticket, it's done digitally. It prints out a receipt for the, the person receiving the ticket. It gives the officer their copy, and it also automatically downloads it into our report management system and sends a copy of it to a court. It's a tremendous time saver for everyone involved. So, we're researching that. The only pitfall I see is that it's expensive, so we wanted to go with the grant route first and also make sure that it's equally compatible in all three counties.
How many was that for?
I'm sorry? That would be for the whole fleet. That being said, we do serve three counties, and I want to make sure before we purchase anything that it's, it's not just serving one county and doesn't communicate at all with another one. So, we're going to work through that before we actually bring that to the board. Evidence technician kits, just some upgraded equipment for all the evidence officers and have them in squad cars, four additional tasers to add to the fleet. There are the AR-15 rifles that will complete our shotgun rotation, and we will be fully consistent throughout the fleet at that point.
Did we get to try those out?
I'm sorry?
Did we get to try those out?
I'm sorry, I'm deaf.
Did we get to try out the AR-15s?
Uh, you know, we could consider.
We do have that simulator coming.
We have a simulator that comes often, and we always invite the board, and we actually encourage the board to play in a simulator. It's, it's always fun to watch everybody's blood pressure go up. They're very real situations, so.
Maybe I can use the taser on camera.
Yeah, we're always looking for volunteers. Number 20 was just a low-light digital video camera for the evidence technicians to bring into crime scenes. 21 was a portable light tower with generators complete. We use those very often now. We rely on other institutions to provide those. We don't have any, and those other institutions have been very gracious with their willingness to share. However, I think in an event that would be, that might impact multi-jurisdictions, those, that graciousness may be subletted to several other jurisdictions. So, I think it's just good practice to have at least some capabilities internally, and it wouldn't be that we would be completely isolated and not use those resources from other organizations. However, I do think these would not go collect much dust. We do many evening community events. These are used to light up crossing, crossings for pedestrians. They use to light up crime scenes out in fields or in wooded areas or in backyards. And in a natural disaster that might cut through several towns, it would be nice to have two in town that we could rely on.
When we've borrowed the other ones before, how many times have we used two?
I'm sorry?
When we've borrowed from other towns, how many times have we used two?
Uh, there are times where we need only one, but when we need them, we need several. So, even when we borrow those several, we would still, could use these two. And an example of that would be the Fourth of July. That's a week-long festival in a very large field that's very hard to police because most, it's all dark, and this just gives us a way to strategically light that up when the festival hours are ended, and we just turn them on, and it really helps us police the area and quiet, quiet the evening very quickly. So. Traffic counters, not funded. We were able to attain the ones we needed. We were able to replace the four we had, update those this year. When we need them, we need lots of them, but we're going to try and make it this year with four traffic counters. Investigations remote camera and DVR system. That's a long-term surveillance system that has its own DVR system. It allows multiple-day surveillance, downloadable. And again, we can put those in institutions or in homes or in businesses that have been victims of crime. Two tablets for the FTOs. Now, an FTO, I'm sorry, is a field training officer. Those are senior officers who train our new recruits, and they take lots and lots of notes all day long on minute-to-minute performance of the recruit, their entire day is evaluated. And afterwards, they have to come, at the end of the day, they have to come in and spend a long period of time downloading that. We thought it would be nice for them to have two laptops that they could carry into the squad car and just take care of that business while the day's going along instead of having to back-end it. Tactical vests is a routine replacement for the warrant service team. We'll be asking for four new ones this year. That just means the old ones have exceeded their life warranty. Incident command post, not funded. That's a high-dollar ticket. We're going to be pushing that off in another year or two. The all-terrain vehicle is another thing that we can rely on often from the graces of other institutions. However, that is being used more and more often, and we're having to go farther and farther to find people who are willing to share. We have one pretty locally, but it gets used a lot. It's another one of those things where when you need one, sometimes other jurisdictions need one as well, and it might be nice to have one. Go ahead.
How do you get the all-terrain vehicle to the crime scene?
Trailer.
You're going to have to speak up.
She said, "How do we get the all-terrain vehicle to the crime scene?"
Well, it would actually be able to be driven on the streets or into the woods or on the bike trails or wherever, but it's pretty fast, and it's, because it's police, it can go on the streets, yeah.
But if it's here in your parking lot, and you have a crime investigation out at Weathersfield, is the ATV going to be able to get there in time to do any good?
Yeah, it won't be considered an emergency response vehicle. It's actually an all-terrain. It would be brought in to support the emergency, to like go into the fields or go into the woods, or to get into areas where a squad car can't get. So, it would be brought in as kind of a second tier.
On a trailer?
It could be brought in on a trailer, or depending on where it is, it could most likely be driven there as well.
I think it's a good idea. I just, I'm just not getting the logistics of it, that's all.
Yeah. We use them often, again, at the community events, at the Fourth of July. You'll see one out there, if not two. We use them at National Night Out, and we also call them in for, again, lost or autistic or dementia patients that might be out in the woods or in the forest preserve.
So, is this the kind?
Again, I got a cold. My ears are plugged. I apologize.
Is this the kind that you drive or that you sit on and has four wheels?
It's a four-wheeler, yeah. It's a big, the big off-road, big four-by-four.
The same type that was at National Night Out for the emergency services?
Yeah, very similar, yeah. Like a big, they call them gators. They got a cage over the top of them. They can put a light on top of them.
Get in a trailer too with this?
We could, yeah. It includes. Number 28 is the second police that was not funded. That's the second K-9 unit. That would be a non-aggression dog that we would utilize in more school presentations and drug detection and part of our CIT team. It would be highly utilized but not funded this year.
This is a great idea.
Mobile forensics device, it's a high-dollar issue. However, it would be highly utilized by our cyber crimes investigator. He has a good relationship with the FBI, but the FBI's in Chicago, and he's constantly taking cellphones downtown. He's one of the few investigators in the area that knows how to do this and has expertise at it, and almost all crimes these days involve cellphones, almost all of them. We had a drug-induced homicide that we were able to put that together by getting court orders for several cellphones. And what this does is it allows us to take the cellphone by court order and immediately place it in a bag, and this bag is highly sophisticated and designed that nothing, no signals can get into it, and none can get out, and you can't delete anything from afar, and when it goes in the bag, it is secure. And it allows our investigator to bring it back here and start downloading all the information off of that. And we do that through court orders. We use that often in felony cases and missing children and in narcotics investigations. So, that would be a highly utilized and useful tool. The National Night Out mascot continues to show every year and continues to get funded. But again, Patrick's always willing to put the cape on and run around the park, so we're able to save some money there. And then the rest of this is unfunded items based on needs of the department.
Yeah, I think you should just.
Yeah, I'll go through these real briefly. Property room paper, money scanner and counter. We count a lot of money through our narcotics investigations and take that over to the bank, and until I'm, that's not funded, a new boat trailer. We have an old boat trailer. We can continue to latch that down and.
When did we get a boat?
I'm sorry?
When did we get a boat?
In the Great Flood.
And after the year of the Great Flood.
And what kind of boat is it?
Well, it's kind of, I remember the old Jacques Cousteau movies where they got in the rubber rafts, and they got, put the boat, they call them Zodiacs, and they usually put the, Greenpeace uses them to go between whaling ships and the whale to protect the whales. It's a Zodiac, yeah. So, and we have that fully inflated in our garage, ready to go on a moment's notice.
I see a donation in your future.
The Segway was not funded. We have surveillance systems for our warrant service team that was not funded. Records workstation was not funded. And what you're going to see from 36 on down were improvements to a 22-year-old building that has served us well, but is now become a challenge for us, and so we're going to explore other ways and other revenues to attack this problem rather than putting it in the capital budget. But you'll see those things are pretty much highlighted between 36 and 47, all that being cut it out, cut out, kind of added up to $154,000 worth of cuts out of this budget. So, we will continue to improvise and seek innovations on how to keep the police department in working order. We appreciate your support on that. We then move into professional development, which is one of the hallmarks of our culture and a standout when compared per capita in the industry. The initial request was for $133,567,000 in professional development. That was cut back to $90,000. So, while what you see here is a list that amounts to $133,000, I will just tab a couple of highlights. On page 16, number one is the Northwest University Center for Public Safety. We send all our sergeants through that. That is considered a traditional sign of professionalism on any supervisor in law enforcement's resume, and Sergeant Naidenoff is scheduled to go to that this year. Have several conferences. Calea, our continued dedication to Calea, on page 16. If we switch to page 18, and we go down to accident investigation, which is kind of midstream there, you'll see lots of things that go to hand-in-hand with our five accident reconstructionists. Bartlett took the lead this year, and we worked with the towns that represent MCAT, which is a major case assistance team. They are highly specialized forensics and investigators that investigate homicides and violent, violent crimes to people. We decided to parlay that, and we got approval from the board and some buy-in, and we just rolled out what's now considered MCAT STAR, which stands for Serious Traffic Accident Reconstruction, and we decided it just makes more sense to share those resources. I have five, Elk Grove has five, Streamwood has five, and instead of waking everybody up and calling them out and paying everybody overtime and having to keep up with all the automated computer software that goes along with our traffic crash reconstruction, which can runs into tens of thousands of dollars, we decided, why don't we organize that and pool that so that we can share those resources? And I think you'll see that that'll be a tremendous advantage for all the villages in the area as we move forward into future budgets. Then the police academy, NEAMRT, which is a hallmark, northeast multi-regional training on the bottom of, that's, that's kind of a must for all police departments in our area, and it's the biggest bang-for-buck for training in law enforcement. If there's any particular questions on some of the things here, we have to, again, decide which things will go. We're going to be making approximately $43,000 worth of cuts to that and get it back down to $90,000. Then on page 21, we're going to move into professional associations. Almost all these are existing. There's a new one at the bottom of page 21, the DuPage County Major Crimes. Again, that's, again, a co-op of all the departments in DuPage County who share investigative resources during a homicide or violent crime. Two other highlights would be about midway down page 25 is the Cook County Children's Advocacy Center. Again, we have a relationship with them as do all law enforcement agencies in DuPage County. They assist us with crimes involving young children, and that's designed to minimize the impact on the victim during forensic interviews. And again, DuPage County Children's Center and the Cook County Children's Advocacy Center. That's, that serves us in both counties. On page 23, you can see all the way down through the third from the bottom is existing, but we're going to add star to that, which is, will stand for the Serious Traffic Accident So, that'll be a slight change going forward into this year. Other than that, they're all existing. Then on 24, one of the more expensive existing relationships we have is the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, or otherwise known as NIPUS, which is a very large, probably the largest multi-jurisdictional SWAT team in the United States, and one of the best-trained in not only the country but the world, and they're very, very useful and very, very inexpensive insurance when you need them. So, that's one of the highlights of our associations. So, I guess we'll, please, I'm sorry?
What town are they out of?
What town are they out of? They're actually out of all the towns. We have several team members on our department and equipment here, and in all the, there are 60 collar communities throughout the western suburbs that serve, there's about 88 members on the team. They serve 60 communities, and will first back up to Chicago during a nuclear biological or chemical incident. So, it's a very high-speed, dynamic team. We can move into public safety expenditures and go down that unless there's any questions to this point.
Anybody have any questions up to this point? We can save the chief from.
Chief, are you going to reuse the old K-9 vehicle?
I'm sorry?
We're going to reuse the old K-9 vehicle?
That's correct, yeah. As a matter of fact, that was part of the. As a matter of fact, that was part of the vehicle rotation for last year, so it's actually a new vehicle. So we transferred a lot of the equipment out of that into the new one, and it'll wait for the new dog.
You made a comment about the video camera on 13 that we-
Page 13?
Omitted. I was just curious about, you said that we use those a lot in this village and-
Are we talking item 35, sir?
Where it allows you not to have somebody sitting there overnight trying to witness some type of nuisance. Item number 13, video camera. It'd be interesting to see if we aren't using that camera, how much it costs in additional patrol in that area.
Mr. Mayor, are we talking about priority number 35?
Item number 13.
13, I'm sorry, let me get there.
These aren't.
Page number eight.
Oh, yeah, page number eight.
Page eight, number 13. Video camera. Okay, this was a, this is an unmarked patrol car used for surveillance, and those video cameras are used primarily for traffic stops, so we have them in all the patrol cars because that's a high, big part of their function on a daily basis. We did a needs assessment on that, and we just, and because we didn't buy the car, the car was deferred, we also automatically deferred this. That may, when we eventually purchase the car, you may see this reappear.
I have a question on page 27, funeral home transportation services.
I, where are we at?
27?
Page 27.
Funeral services.
Okay, you got ahead of me.
It's a new line item.
It is a new line item. We realized that we were being charged and we were taken out of contingencies. Anytime there's a death investigation or a decedent in town, the police department will come do an initial inquiry, and if it's natural causes, we'll call for the family, or if it's a death investigation, we'll call for the removal. And there's a bill that is, we get charged a bill with that. And we've been taking that out of contingencies in the census. We realize that that actually is fairly predictable. We actually added it a line item. I'm sorry?
Do you transport the bodies?
They transport the body either to the funeral home or most often to the medical examiner's office. And there's a fee associated to that by the deliveries party.
Why don't we just tell them to-
We do not transport, no. We hire a vendor, usually a funeral home services in town, and there's a fee that goes along with that.
Do we pass those costs on?
We do not.
Individual, a single family?
We haven't. We have not passed that on, not if it's congruent with an investigation of any kind.
Chief, on the two additional officers, is that something that we've had in the budget for some time and kept getting pushed down the road, or is it no?
No, we didn't ask for any personnel this year. Last year, we asked for two additional officers and we had them. One went to the directed patrol team and one went to the supervision to oversee that team that we were going to put together. So that's where those two officers came from.
We didn't get a full-time, so this will be the first full-
Excuse me, this will be the first full year of the two officers that were approved last year.
We're still trying. It's very-
This is a two additional above and beyond what you put on last.
Yeah, and in addition to that, we had a retirement, which got us down to needing three officers. And then I tell you, we go through a lot of candidates to find one. So it's a labor-intensive and long process to fill these positions, it just is.
Is there going to be another naming for Brewster 2?
You know what? That's always a great question, and we like to open that up to the community. In years past, we've made it part of an art project for grade schoolers to not only draw the canine unit the best they could, but put an applicable name, and then we've limited that down and then announced the winner and made, we've made big splashes with that with the community.
Good idea.
Valerie is nice.
Valerie, yeah.
I like that. Listen, it was hard cutting that second dog. That was not easy.
You mentioned the cyber-based prime a lot. It sounds to me like that's an increasing, especially with the whole bag that carries the cellphone and make sure that you can't delete things from afar. Do you actually term that guy like the Geek Squad or?
Yeah, I would call that kind of a Geek Squad, yeah. Highly effective. We can continue, or we can, or if you-
Let me ask the board how you would like to proceed through this. Typically, these are the areas that we go through, and we include the line item detail for the board to look through and typically don't walk through it line item by line item. This year, the mayor had requested that you get additional information from what we've had other years to be able to look through in more detail the proposed budget. And so what we have included this year is the line item detail, which is all those pages behind the line item that has all the many, many things that go into each line item detail. So I don't think we'll walk through those, but I wanted to make sure that you had all that, so when you see a line item, you know exactly what is in that line item. So we can go into more detail on this or answer questions at this point or move in any way that you would choose.
How much do we think we're going to get at the auction for all these other cars we're turning in?
In general, about $6,000? In general, they've been coming in a little over $6,000 apiece, and that again goes back into the general fund.
Just to kind of highlight on what Valerie was saying, if you look at page 25, you'll see line item 526050, vehicle setup. You can go to page 29 and you can actually see how those total up. So that's what I asked for. I'd rather, just having vehicle setup as line item 526050 doesn't really tell me a whole lot, but if you want to know what that $56,640 covers, then you can go to page 29 under 52650, 6050, and it'll tell you what those things cover.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It was a good idea.
I'm not as smart as you are.
I want to hear you make a pitch for the second dog, Valerie.
I beg your pardon?
I want to hear you make a pitch for the second dog.
Well, go ahead.
Well, our dog is a very, Brewster is very busy. He's very busy. He's used on a daily basis many times, and when he's off, he's missed. And this would just be a simple way to have a second dog so that you have one on all days of the week. And we call him in a lot when he's off, requiring overtime, and this would just be a way to have one all the time. However, I thought it would be nice, if you're going to have one primary dog, it's important that they are an aggression dog, and that requires a lot of additional training, apprehension, and drug detection. I thought it might be an opportunity to get a softer dog, i.e. Labrador, who could do narcotics and bomb detection and, again, do locker searches and a whole bit. But also, there's a lot of requests for dogs in classrooms and in community affairs and in neighborhood block parties and in boardrooms, and I've always been just really reluctant to do that with an aggression dog, even though they're highly trained. They are trained to be aggressive, and if it were to ever happen, the obvious question was, why didn't you know? So we just limit that. And when we do community events and stuff, it's kind of from afar and the dog's muzzled and it's not really as touchy-as-feely as it could be. If we had the second dog, I would probably have it be a, although very similar, drug detection and bomb detection, it would also be a little bit more touchy-feely. It would take the aggression out of it, it would be a different style of dog. Instead of a German Shepherd, it would probably be a Labrador Retriever. We'd push him into, we'd push him into the community events and into the block parties and into the classrooms, and they could still do the locker searches and the drug detections, so.
We found out just how valuable a bomb dog was last Fourth of July when we were able to borrow one, and you might tell them what we were able to do.
Yeah, we, yeah, we take public safety very seriously in big, long-term, whole-town events, and we had the Scissor Platform, it went up real high last year, and we had officers with high-power telescopes, and they were tasked with finding any picnic blankets with containers that didn't have anybody around them for extended periods of time. In other words, beyond going to the porta potty or beyond going to the funnel cake. And if they were just left alone for long periods of time, very below the radar, we would just walk the dog out into the park, and the dog would walk around the container and wouldn't hit on it, and we all felt a lot safer because of that. And it was just a great resource.
And so did everybody around you watching the dog walk.
Yeah, everybody, everybody really picked up on that and said, wow, that is just a real nice addition. So that is a dog that we cannot count on because it's used throughout the state. So I thought Bartlett might-
Don't put that in the paper, please.
Appreciate that. So, yeah, a great resource.
Can I ask, as we were going through things that just occurred to me, and this was something that was funded, but it made me think about something I read a few months ago, and it was talking about 38 was the evidence room storage case to secure guns and rifles and drugs. Well, this article I was reading, I think, I don't know, it might have been St. Charles or it might have been neighboring towns, and the question is, because I simply don't know, and so I'm asking it just out of curiosity, what are we doing with the confiscated guns and rifles and that sort of thing? Because these other cities were selling those and making income that then was put back into the police department. Do we do anything like that?
No, we do not. We get court orders for destruction.
And could we? I mean, other cities are selling the-
We could research that with direction from the board, yeah. It would not be, by any means, a financial windfall, and most of these weapons have a very colored and emotional past that some residents may not appreciate being recirculated. So I just don't know if the, I'm not going to say bang for the buck. I'm going to say I don't know that the money that you can anticipate by selling the few that we have, we'd have to weigh that versus the compassion for victims. So, yeah, it's something that other departments have done. I don't see it as a financial windfall or a real budget changer by any means, but-
I think it was an article on the-
It was, it was interesting. It is, I've been keeping abreast of that.
I read, so I was just curious. I've been always looking for other ways to bring in an extra buck here and there.
I understand, absolutely. We can look at, we can continue to track that.
Yeah.
I would encourage staff to, if we get midway through the budget and there's a little extra money, to bring a dog back up again.
To bring what?
That's my opinion.
To bring what?
The dog, the second dog.
Sell the antique firearms, destroy the elements.
The board would like us to keep that in the back of our fiscal mind as we move forward. We can do that.
If we have a windfall with some seizure money or-
It says I love the idea of a fluffy little dog. I'd rather have some other village feeding it and training it.
That's right, that's right.
You said you had two surveillance that were taken over from Drug Bust, two vehicles?
Uh-huh.
Have we had more than that? And do we sell those? Do we sell the vehicles?
Yeah, we know, we could look at some creative ways of trying to create some funding through past and anticipated future seizures. We could take a look at that for you.
Because it's within your right, if it's confiscated, to do that, right?
It's correct.
Okay. That's how you pay for the second dog.
There's a lot of laws on that, too. Again, not to the detriment of anything else. I just think, I think it's a good idea. I think if we can find a way to make it happen, you would have my support on it.
Well, we can keep that on the radar and let you know a status as we move through this year.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So if there aren't any other questions relative to the police department, we would move along.
Yeah, I guess the only last comment I would make is, Chief, you had mentioned that you guys are going to funnel through this training list, a fairly long, extensive list, and pare it down to the ones that you feel are the most important. Is that right?
That's correct.
Were these all events that were attended last year?
Uh, no.
Okay, so this is just a wide array of lists, and then usually every year you're picking through which ones you're going to use?
That's right, and every year it does get pared back, and some things get deferred but become a priority of the following year, and so we make it work. We make it work with the financing we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move along to the Administration Department and Professional Services. As the Administration Department makes their way forward.
I feel like the sorbet portion of the meal. You know, that's a lot to take in, and Scott and I are going to be brief and refreshing, or at least we hope so.
It's not near as fun as dogs, guns, and stuff like that.
We have nothing exciting. It's like coming after them on the school tour. Nobody wants to look at finance when they've been to the police department. The Administration Department budget proposes an increase of 1% over last year. This budget, for the most part, maintains current programs, services, and staffing. There are, however, a few changes. The farmer's market brought 5,279 shoppers to downtown last summer. In the coming fiscal year, we will reduce our budget by the $4,000 allocated for the market operation and reduce our overtime salaries as well, as the operation of a downtown farmer's market is no longer a function of the village but will be privately supported in Bartlett Plaza. The history museum budget of $11,000 has been reduced by 8% and will introduce a docent program this spring that will utilize volunteers to assist in a variety of programs, tours, and events. This program will also decrease the museum's salary expenses. One of the EDC's recommendations regarding the downtown this past summer was to have cable access in the train station. We are working with Metro and Comcast to install the cable and the Wi-Fi hotspot in the station. Our budget does include the $9,000 annual fee for those services. A few highlights from the previous year were focused mainly on communication. In October, we started the use of the GoRequest mobile app. This new citizen request management system helps residents find useful information, submit a request for village services, and check the status of requests at their own convenience, day or night. We also launched the village email subscription service, and looking forward, we will be working on the website redesign. With regard to communication, we have also budgeted $16,000 for labor and equipment to connect a phone directly into the sound system here in the council chambers, upgrading the system we currently use for remote meeting attendance. As you'll see on the following pages, we have no personnel requests and no additions to professional development or associations in the admin department. Scott and I are happy to answer any of the questions that you might have.
You indicated that we're going to upgrade the sound system for the village boardroom. Can you explain that for us?
Certainly. Right now, we're talking about when there's remote, when you're remotely accessing the, attending the meeting. So right now, we have a series of recycling bins and chairs that we put together up in the-
As you can see that.
Yeah, so you can see it.
Put-together thing that we do out there.
In the multipurpose room that pushes a microphone closer to a speaker that we hook up to a phone and a computer. And it is not the best system. It is functional, but I think, as many of you have used it in the past, no, it's not without its faults. And what the budget proposal is, is for the equipment that will hardwire the phone access directly into the system of microphones and speakers.
Are there any further questions about administration? If not, then I would move on to Professional Services, which begins on page 13. This used to be a fairly significant budget during the bail-fill years, the school years, and I can tell you it is a shadow of its former self blissfully now that we're not having too many of those issues. Our actuarial consultant is one who does the police department pension actuarial every year, and we split the cost with the police pension to accomplish that. On professional planners, this will probably drop off because we've had enough years of zero. We use professional planner for many different things, including updating the zoning ordinance, and we cut that out several years, hence- and we cut that out several years, hence one of the reasons it's taken so long to get through it. So, there are no professional planners. Our legal services is up 1%, and if you go to the line item detail on the next page, it will tell you exactly who is in that list of legal services and how much they are paid. So, you have the detail right there. Engineering services, we have 0%, small amount of money that we might use for general fund engineering in general. The engineering fees are in sewer and water and in some of those funds, but these would be more for the just general corporate. Downtown study that we've got going, that would come out of an area in this budget. So, other than that, that's all we have in professional services nowadays.
Question regarding the professional services. I know we, for a number of years, use the services of our lobbyists.
Yes.
I've never seen him.
Tom Cullen.
Yeah, I've never actually seen him here. Do you think maybe we could get him sometimes to stop by?
Sure, he's been here several years. He used to come, give the board periodical updates on some legislation, but primarily school issues, and I know he'd be pleased to attend a board meeting.
I think that would be a good, I mean, particularly since we have some newer board members, and other than TL, I don't think any of us has actually seen him face to face, so...
When Senator Cullerton was in town, meeting with the Arts and Bartlett people, we had folks from Cullen's office here as well, so they know the way. They can come.
Okay. That's just, I would personally like that.
Under the legal services, there's an item, other legal services, and that's $20,000, which is kind of a lot of money for other. What would be included in that $20,000?
Boy, we've had a million different things that come up that we don't anticipate. I hate to raise the issue, but we had the issue of Vill Olivia Park District lawsuit that sort of got sprung upon us.
So, is this special counsel, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jack Segal was involved in a couple of those cases as well.
This is almost more of a contingency.
Pardon?
It's almost more of a contingency.
Yes, that's right. We just, you know, you can see we haven't used it too much, but we need to do it if something comes up.
With regards to Brian, I hate to bring his up, Brian, but just, can you explain, is a village attorney based on this year's estimate plus 5%? Does that mean we're giving Brian's, basically, his salary's increased 5% or not?
No. You will have a proposed contract from Brian before the May 1st meeting that will set his salary for the year. This is just anticipation of things going, activity going up, activity going down, and making sure that we have the ability to pay for the hours that we are requiring out of our corporation counsel.
Clarify, he's not salaried, right?
No.
Okay, you're not salaried, you go on an hourly basis?
Right. So, they're trying to guess at the hours. And so, the 5% is, you know, the cover.
Somewhere in that ballpark.
It may be, but I'm not anticipating asking for a 5% increase.
So, it could be minus 5%.
You can ask for it.
It could be.
Well, I'm not...
Just checking there, Brian.
It's a good question.
I got the message.
5% is tipsy.
Yeah.
If there aren't any other questions relative to this portion, we would move on to golf, perhaps have some more media issues for you to consider.
I guess I would just, Trustee Shipman brought up the lobbyist, and I've been trying to rack my brain this year, too, to find out the validity of having both the $23,000 for Northwest Municipal and the 20-some thousand dollars for DuPage Mayor's Managers. Obviously, we have to be on both sides of that because of the location of this village, which is unfortunate. But from the amount of information I've garnered from both of those particular organizations, they're doing exactly what, for us, allegedly, I know we're going to get a more personal service with this lobbyist, but as Trustee Shipman said, I haven't seen him. So, I think we might want to think about, if not this year, at some point, making a determination of whether or not we need to keep all of that representation. I think it's a, what's it called?
It is.
Representation without...
For several budgets, for several budgets in a row, I've recommended cutting the lobbyist because I think the lobbyist brings value, but in a lot of the budgets that we go through, and this one included, I think we have to make decisions between real value and absolute necessity. And I think when you put those three items on the table, that is a good question because there is some redundant, there is value, but there is redundancy. I think one of the reasons why we cling tenaciously to DuPage and probably Cook as well, Paul, is the ability to secure road funding from those agencies who pass along the money from the federal government, and our presence at the table has a big part in getting those funds. And so, from that perspective, there is some real momentum there, but I would agree with you, there's still, in all three of them, a lot of redundancy.
From the grand scheme of the budget, it's miniscule, but, I mean, I can understand Northwest Municipal and DuPage Mayor's Managers, probably, from the time that I've been around, have provided more, not only more knowledge and more information, but probably more benefit from the membership there than we've probably garnered from the lobbyist for some time, I would imagine. So, I think that's something that we might want to think about discussing further.
Can you tell us the last three things he worked on?
I'm sure Paul can. He's been particularly productive right now, which makes it a little difficult.
Let's see. Well, every year's the budget, state budget, what is it that they're looking at and how, you know, if there's some issues that we need to take care of or be aware of. We had a challenge to our fair housing numbers, and he helped us work through that process for the requirements for that reporting and how to appeal it, if you can appeal it, a number of issues there. In terms of working with our other elected officials, worked very closely with Cullerton's office in that they called and said, hey, you know, we have some discretionary funds that we can grant out, what do you have? And we worked with Tom Cullen and Cullerton's office to put together a visit out here to visit the Arts and Bartlett folks. They wanted some cultural funding options. We've also worked with Tom Cullen on just legislation that comes up. You know, there's usually TIF challenge, there's usually some kind of workers' confrontation legislation that comes up. Those are the things that come up every year. Normally, if there's something that one of the departments has specifically legislative-wise, we call Tom and ask him to track it. We get monthly reports on those, on the status of bills, and those that are specifically maybe a little more important to Bartlett than the usual.
And he was able to give us some information regarding the FEMA grant. With the amount of legislation and grant funding that comes out of Springfield can be quite cumbersome, so he's able to narrow that down and get the stuff that's put in us right in front of our face when it comes to the floor.
And the latest bike path grant, too?
He's, I think so.
And he also helped us with IDNR and the latest bike path grant that we received.
Well, my question would be, would it be a fair estimate to say that he brings in at least as much as he's paid or not?
This year.
This year.
This year.
Not every year.
Not every year.
That isn't his charge. You know, that's one analysis. I think that, you know, he has the ability, if we identify a particular proposed legislation that hits us personally, to go to the mat with the representatives based on what we need. I don't mean to argue against this, but having been the one that cut Cullen several years, we have a great relationship with the Illinois Municipal League, and I have to tell you that I think we have people that we can call in the league. If there was something that came up that Northwest was not lobbying for it, DuPage was not lobbying, it was a real issue just for Bartlett, I think we could muster some of that same heat, or at least bringing awareness of the issue without that additional effort. Because that's what I think he brings, that, you know, that's what I think he really brings to us, is a real narrow focus on issues that we might have.
Historically speaking...
You know, it seems to me that it's hard to judge because if there were information that Mr. Cullen should be passing on to us, if he doesn't, we don't really know that he didn't.
Right. And that's because there's some patients.
Yeah. However, I do think because of his past record in keeping Bartlett, you know, in his vision all the time, that perhaps the, oh, I'm going to choke on this because I've always been against having Mr. Cullen, perhaps that $24,000 is money well spent because he is keeping an eye out for us.
Historically speaking, correct me now, was he brought on about the time of the whole U-46 separation thing?
Yes. Yes.
And we're no longer...
And then he cut his salary in half when we were done with the U-46.
When's his contract up?
He just has the annual contract, and we said, well, we don't need you quite as much, we're not doing the school thing, and so he cut his salary in half and continued to work on some other issues.
Cut it in half again.
Good.
Let's say the board doesn't really feel there's much bang for our buck. We'd love to keep you on the hook, we'll agree that if something major comes up, we can renegotiate on the fly.
Are there other state lobbyists that we could be talking to?
All kinds of firms, yeah.
If you pay them.
Huh?
If you pay them, yeah. Did you, you want to...
And he does. And I've heard this from our state reps, senators and representatives, that he does have a very, very good reputation at Springfield.
I think you've heard some of our comments. Can make some direction from that.
Yeah.
That would be my suggestion.
Maybe I'll cut it in half again.
Do we have the golf? It's been three hours.
That's, I would like to do that.
Okay.
Or at least start, but that's certainly up to you, ladies and gentlemen.
Maybe we'll just get the front nine done.
That was pretty good.
Oh, boy.
Robert.
I have my committee here again with me tonight, Paul and Kevin. We like to do it by committee. They have important input in their areas of expertise here with our budget. Looking at one of Jess's pages here, and it says, we need good weather. Gee, do you think? Last year, awful. Started this year awful, so we're really looking forward to a change for the better here coming up shortly, we hope. As far as our budget is concerned, the golf program, golf shop revenues are projected down 3%, which has everything to do with the budget of rounds of 37,000 as opposed to 38,000, which we budgeted for last year. The 37,000 is not just picked out of the air, but it's actually our 10-year average of rounds of golf played almost to the player. So, it's, we consider this a somewhat conservative number to budget off of with any kind of weather at all, and some of the initiatives that we're, that I'll go through very quickly here, we feel that hopefully we can exceed that number and do a better job than the 37,000 that we're budgeting for. We're not recommending any rate increases for the coming season. We feel that where we're at is a good place to be right now, with the marketplace as it is and the industry as it is. Some of the initiatives that we're working on to offset a lack of fee increases that we've actually are working on currently and some have accomplished. One is restructuring our golf league times in the evening to be able to free up more afternoon rounds for us to fill by the general public. I think, we think we can generate a fair amount of rounds, additional rounds, by restructuring the leagues. All the leagues are smaller than they used to be, and as such, they don't need as much time and boat tees as they have in the past. We've talked to them, we've come to an agreement with them, they understand the situation, and they're very cooperative in that respect. Next, we've also moved some starting times around on some of our golf outings, actually moved them a little bit earlier in the day again to get them off the course a little sooner, free up times at night that we can fill again, generate more rounds of golf. And finally, Fridays through Sundays, holidays, we're on a crusade to make our golfers a little more accountable for their tee times and the responsibilities of their tee times through the use of credit cards. So, we're going to have, we're going to have our staff, have people guarantee their times, you know, through the use of credit cards, and really, all we ask in return, the only thing we ask in return is if they sign up for eight people as an example, or they're going to show up with four, just call us and tell us that, so we have an opportunity to fill those times. The amount of no-shows over the last few years has continued to escalate, and it's costing us an alarming amount of money, to be honest with you. So, we're going to start with Friday through Sunday and work with those accountability issues, just like most golf courses do. So, those type of things, they can generate a sizable amount of money, which is not currently in this year's budget, but things that we are going to work on over and above. The food beverage operation is projected to, revenues are projected down by 5%. Some of that is a product of the rounds of golf budget, especially in the restaurant, that type of thing. Some of it is an industry issue with the banquets. You know, we've talked already, one of the things I want to bring up, we've talked already about possible expansion of the bar area to the west, just moving that out, that west wall out to the edge of the veranda. That opportunity also exists in the banquet area, where we have that wall that comes in and over to the, facing west, that we have that same opportunity where we can also make that, make the banquet area a little bit, somewhat bigger, actually, substantially bigger, at least another 40 people, by taking that wall and moving it to the edge of the veranda also, while still protecting the north veranda for wedding ceremonies, that type of thing, the south veranda for people outside eating after the rounds of golf, registration tables, and that type of thing. But it's kind of a twofold. We have the opportunity in the bar, we also have the opportunity in the banquet area. Actually, I would have Paul just kind of expand a little bit on that banquet area.
The banquet area specifically, we continue to turn away, it seems like larger and larger event inquiries, and those are in the, you know, the 220 to 280 range, of which we really can do about 200 right now effectively. And then we're going to add maybe 40, 50 seats by doing that, and addressing those larger events, probably 30, 40 a year, we can't even address gabbie based on the size of the facility, and those are the events that are still making the phone calls and spending the money compared to some of the middle range, the 150s, 120s, that have kind of fallen off to some degree to a lot of economic reasons. By adding those other, by adding that space in there, what it's going to eliminate is some of the difficulties the brides have viewing what's going on in their room right now with that L shape that goes around by the veranda there, who's inside of a head table. The large, the large room that you're going to have is going to allow you to move head tables and gift tables, and dance floor is in the areas that is still full view amongst everybody in the room. So, a lot of the people are having a trouble taking a look, is my party A going to fit in the facility, but how we can do it, right now, we're kind of locked into what the setup's got to look like 95% of the time. So, that freedom, I think, would go ahead and let us do some more larger events, larger golf outings, I think, larger fundraisers, and ultimately going to produce some increased revenues down the road as people get used to the size of the facility and we advertise it and such.
The revenue, the additional revenue generated by such improvements, we obviously wouldn't reap the benefits of that, probably not at all this particular fiscal year, but going forward, could make a huge difference in bookings. Actually, you know, bookings can, bookings for weddings and that, a year, year and a half out, could make a huge difference in future bookings and future activities there giving us a... there, giving us a lot more flexibility with, you know, and kind of reacting to the demand on the facility right now.
And then when you put both of them together, including the bar, we've always had a hard time as a facility, it was originally built to have a restaurant in the center, in the center and use that as a full-time restaurant. That really kind of has evolved into, into what we needed to be as a banquet area. And by expanding the bar, what that's going to allow us to go ahead and do is not only increase the bar business, maybe increase a little bit more regular restaurant and special event functions, but that's going to allow us to hold some golf outings until the golf course at the same time, which right now with the weddings taking part over in there, there's no room for the golf outing to eat inside at the same time. So they could be twofold to go ahead and build on that business also.
Expenses, golf, total golf program expenses for the whole facility are projected to decrease by, I think, 3% if I'm not mistaken here, by approximately 3%. We work very hard on our, on our expenses. We scrutinize our budget daily, weekly, monthly. We, we do our very best to not only present a budget that's about as lean as we can make it, but we also continue to strive to under, under expense ourselves throughout the year without compromising service or quality. So we, we work very hard at that and, and underspend as best as we can. So that being said, we can go into the highlights of this past year if we have no questions up to this point. We're continuing our junior golf program, although it has become a challenge with the kids. We have so many opportunities out there outside of golf, being travel baseball, travel soccer, basketball camps, whatever. It's all out there. We're trying to get our fair share of the kids in our program. We also continue to work with the local high schools, U-46, with their golf teams. We also continued, our kids play free program after 5 o'clock at night. All they have to do is be accompanied by an adult and we encourage them to get out and play as a family. That's a big, that's a big initiative with the PGA of America is getting kids and families out playing together. We feel the retention rate is, is better when they're out there with their family and friends and that type of thing. You can see on the next one on page two here where it says encourage, promote and support civic and community groups, you see all the groups here in the Bartlett area that we work with, not only on the golf end of things, but on the food and beverage end of the operation. We continue to work on our marketing efforts, especially through our point-of-sale program. We have over 3,000 emails on account right now so that when we send out our monthly newsletters and our email blasts, it's going out to a fair amount of people. And we continue, that's one of our initiatives in the golf shop to, if we don't have an email on file, to do our very best to get that email because that's, that's the easiest way to advertise as far as that's concerned. We did use a third-party tee time provider last year. We're reviewing the success and success of that program. We haven't actually made any decisions yet for the coming year as far as that part of the third-party would be like a Golf Now or a Great Greens Street type operation. And food and beverage did a lot with their web, with more web-based advertising, which is the direction that the brides are going as far as that's concerned, as far as looking for facilities and looking for venues in which to book at. Other highlights real quickly, First Daniel Bill Tickness Classic, had a lot of fun with that last year. It's scheduled for very early in April here. This year, we're really questioning whether that's going to happen or not. That may be moved to the fall just because of weather. Firecracker open again, one of the best ones we've ever had. We had a great, a lot of fun with that one. We continue to work with Illinois Junior Golf Association, Chicago District Golf, executive women's and the DuPage Valley Conference with their functions, their golf outings and tournaments. A couple of things, this gives us a lot of exposure working with these four entities, number one. And more importantly, it brings a whole lot of paid practice rounds our way, so that's really a good thing. We've begun working on the clubhouse with new carpeting and that type of thing. Kevin is, is unfortunately in the process of removing ash trees, which have, which as you know, you know the issue with the ash trees throughout the community. We're having that same problem on the golf course and we've moved, I think, I think he's removed, I think, 17 to date. I think the last three here are very, very important. The midway, this, this past season was the first year we offered the option to use credit cards for purchases out there and that, that did, that, that really worked out well. People have tended, tend to buy more when using credit cards as opposed to cash and, and I think it showed up this year. As bad as play was this last year, revenues actually increased out there. And we're expanding that now this year and we've already got the system in to offer credit card usage on our beverage cart. So we think that that will also help. That the beverage cart revenues and the midway revenues are bunched into the midway part of the program, so they're, they're all in one. I have to compliment Kevin for the nth number of years, the golf course was in terrific condition, maybe more so than any other year. We, we heard about it from the customers, how nice it was and the job that he's done. And this year wasn't the best of years to try to maintain a golf course with the weather the way it was, but he did a wonderful job again. And finally, food and beverage, Paul and his staff, they received a couple of awards, Best of Weddings by the Knott website and Bride's Choice Award by the Wedding Wire website. Those are the two main websites where, where potential clients look. And that's really good to have them see that right out of the gate. And these two are based on, on input from people who had their functions at our golf course. So that says a lot. Yes?
When we get that information, do we have like a list of wedding planners? We can blast that out too? Do we have an email list of, I mean, how much could it cost to get a list of wedding planners in the Chicago metro area where we can blast this information from a third-party source saying, "Hey, we're great, we're great, we're great"?
It'd be pretty easy to do probably, names are out there.
Yeah, do we do that now or no? Any type of marketing?
You know, we have a, we have a, look at the bottom of our website when you go through bartlett hills dot com, at the very bottom, there's a load of links to different places, all the YouTube videos, Bartlett Hills events that are on there and all the links to, to the Knott and everything else. Those would be very, and there's a running blog that we have going that people can check in on for different people that are commenting about what's going on with the facility. It'd be easy enough to go ahead and get ahold of a lot of those people and my banquet coordinator knows so many people within the industry that she could go ahead and get a large list of names to get that out too.
Yeah. I mean, you got to leverage that information when you get awarded like that.
Very good idea. Thanks.
Any other questions up to this point?
Yeah, I have two. I think the first one, I would like to know precisely how our rates and fees compare with other facilities because that's something that I, I just, I don't know and I think it's important. When residents talk about the golf course to me, that's one of the points they, they hit on, so I'd like to be able to talk about that intelligently.
When we typically, well, not typically, but always, if we are coming with any type of rate increases, we do do a survey of local golf courses. I can provide you obviously with the latest survey that we did last year. We didn't do one this year for that reason because we weren't increasing them. The validity of it too has diminished just a touch, just because there's so much aggressive pricing going on out there and third-party providers and, and that type of thing that's going on in our industry. It, it doesn't carry quite the weight that it does, but you're right, it's good information to have, but it's hard to know whether they're actually charging those rates or not. But it does situate us on, on the rack rates or the posted rates, it does show where we're at. We've always been kind of in the middle to slightly below average. That's where we've always been for years and years and years. But I will get that information to your trustee ranking and so that you can see that. And I'll get it to the board. We'll get it to the board.
Great. I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
In my, my second question is, so we've talked about expanding the bar, we've talked about expanding the banquet hall area. So we're talking essentially about spending $250,000, a quarter of a million dollars on, on the facility. Based on your experience, do you think that that is a wise investment of taxpayer dollars?
I think it's the demand, I think it's responding to the demand of the facility. The calls that we're getting, the requests that we're getting for our facility, we're unable to accommodate way too many of those requests. These improvements or this expansion would allow us, as Paul said, to accommodate many more events, many more functions, not only on the golf side, but certainly on the banquet side. The, you know, we would qualify, let me say this, we would qualify for a lot more events, to host a lot more events than what we do now. So yeah, I do think it's a good investment for the future. You bet.
Have we tried thinking outside of the box a little bit here with, it comes to the pro shop? Is there a possibility that could be, there could be another place in the facility for the pro shop? Perhaps in the basement area, someplace else where I know, I know visibility helps, but yet the golfers, if they're looking for something, they're going to go for it, I'm sure, go to where they have to go. And I, and I bring it up for another reason. Basically, it seems to me that if we did expand the area where you were talking about expanding for a bar, it'd be a lot easier to take down one wall and open it all up into that golf shop area than it would to do an entire expansion outside. And I don't know, is there a possibility of moving the, the pro shop downstairs?
We have looked at this situation so many times. The problem that I would have moving the golf shop downstairs, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, moving the golf shop downstairs, we would lose visibility of the golf course. Right now, we can see the practice range, the 10th tee, the first tee, the snack bar. The visibility is really important for us to operate, I feel, to operate the golf shop properly and, and to have a connection to what's going on on the golf course. By moving the golf shop either to the front of the, of the facility or to the basement, we lose that. We lose that connection with the golf. My shop personnel lose that connection with the golf course as far as what's going on out there. It's really, it's, it's pretty important in my mind. Could, could we move it somewhere else and just deal with it? Absolutely.
Well, wouldn't that allow for the potential to have increased revenue coming in from a restaurant that would be a bigger facility there or a bigger bar revenue coming in from it than, than pro shop?
You know, we looked at that and, and actually I thought initially that made some sense. Shrink down the pro shop, we don't need quite all that space and, and move the wall. But Brian, when you looked at this and we did some preliminary layouts to see how this would work, that wasn't going to work. Really what was going to get us the additional space was to move it out onto the patio. I don't remember the details of that, but I'm hoping you do.
Portion of the bearing wall as we're meeting the pro shop and then that, it would be able to be open all the way, there would have to be a header of some sort that would be put in, sort of the same way over the banquet room. If that's been exchanged out, there would be a whole aisle come in there on that outside wall, but other than that, I mean, it will be wide open. But there is a bearing wall portion of the building there.
But it would open up, it would be, except for the fact there'd probably be some, a couple of metal pillars or something holding up the beam, right?
There would, you would have to have some sort of support, yes.
Bob, let me ask you, as somebody who doesn't golf unless there's a windmill involved, the pro shop isn't just where people go to buy golf equipment, is that correct?
That's correct.
What else goes on at the pro shop?
Well, that's, that's where we run everything, from the handicapping service to our golf outings, to our tournaments, to junior golf, it's where people go.
Is that, if, if I'm coming to golf at Bartlett Hills, that's where I go to start, correct?
You have to go through the, you have to go through the golf shop.
And that's where I go when I end.
Right.
So it seems to me that that's really your, your business office.
It is.
And by the way, if they're there, they're welcome to buy a $1,000 set of clubs and I would encourage them to do so.
Or a $500 gift card or anything like that.
Sure. Right, right. Yeah, gift cards are very good. We like those.
Yeah.
Would, would, would the moving of that, that kind of center of your business to the, to someplace a little more off the beaten path, could that potentially have some negative consequences?
Oh, I think so. I, I, as I just said, I, I think we lose a connection to the golf course itself. I think more than anything else. Plus, plus then people are searching the, especially in the off-season, in the winter time, that type of thing. Right now, they walk in the front door or walk in the side door, they're right in the golf shop. Otherwise, they might, it would actually, if, if the golf shop actually moved to the basement, the way the clubhouse is situated now, they would literally have to go outside to get to us. They'd have to go out, go down the stairs in the middle of winter, go down the stairs and come in. The only place we could possibly do it downstairs is the cart attendant area room underneath the south veranda, the closest to the railroad tracks. That's the only other place that we could really put it. And, and it's a small area. Again, we don't have visual and people would have to walk downstairs or walk down a rather long ramp to get to us in the middle of winter. And so it's somewhat, that is somewhat problematic too.
Okay. You know, there is one thing about the pro shop. Being golfer, you always register and pay your fees in the pro shop. And I must say that there's many times that my husband and I have been in, you know, paying our fees and, and I'm shopping, you know? And I think a lot of people are, are that way. It's just visibility. It's, it's right there and, yeah, it's a necessary part of the marketing.
That may be so, but I, I, the only reason I bring this is up is because I've heard it from golfers who said they wouldn't be opposed to having a golf, the golf shop in the basement area. And so that's the reason I bring it up at all, is because I've heard it from actual people who golf there, saying it wouldn't be a big deal to them and that they're going to go there to buy their balls and their clubs and everything else. And it would open up space. And if it means justify the ends, if you're not, if you're going to make more money off of the bar and the banquet facilities than you are off the pro shop, without extending yourself into a construction expense, then that's where I'm going with this.
You would have a certain amount of construction expense downstairs too. You would have quite a bit down there to make that habitable for a golf shop. You would have to gut it, gut it out and, and redesign it and feel like putting a whole new golf shop down there is what it would be.
But let me tell you, the point you made that I think is a really good one, and I don't know if we focused on that, is to, when we do expand it, we will be able to have sort of like a mini restaurant. TL has raised the issue about ensuring that when people come in off the golf course, they can get a hamburger. Well, we don't want to run a restaurant. We did that and it didn't work. We lost a lot of money. But to be able to have a small contained place, it's an extension of the bar where people can come and have sort of a, you know, smaller restaurant kind of facility, could be for the public as well as the golfers, I think, is important. And I think the way you're proposing to lay out the changes, the bar extension will provide for that as well. I don't think we want to go back into any sort of a larger restaurant operation. Number one, it's risky. Number two, we weren't successful in the past. And I think we want our endeavors that we're doing now to be revenue enhancements and to the extent possible without any sort of risk in terms of loss. But I think it's a good point and I think we can pull it off in the first proposal.
Bob, was it 89,000 the golf shop did last year?
No, I think it was closer to 80,000. Our revenues have dropped a little bit in the golf shop just because we, we're not selling, we're not inventorying as many clubs as we used to. That's the biggest difference. Golf clubs, which are $300 apiece wholesale and things like that, we're not inventorying quite as many of those now because, you know, the cycle changes are such where it's hard to keep up with it and that type of thing. We still offer them. We, we're down to about three companies now that, that will take the inventory out at the end of the year, give us credit that we can apply to our new merchandise next year. We've kind of weeded all the other companies out. We're really dealing with three of the best, but that's one of the reasons why sales are down, just as some, just because of golf shop, is because of golf club sales. We're just not going after it as hard as we used to. Yeah. We've, any other questions? We're good to go here? Golf summary on page four. Staffing is the same as last year, no change in that. Down at the bottom, activity measures, you look at the golf rounds of 37,000. We budgeted 38,000 for this current fiscal year. We're looking at maybe 34,000, especially with the way the weather is. Resident rounds have typically been in that 45% area, total number of resident rounds on a yearly basis. Season passes, that includes my, our seven-day unlimited adult passes, couples passes, junior, senior passes. We're hoping to improve on that a little bit. Our league play is still stable at 10. 10 leagues again this year, could go as high as 11. We're negotiating with another league. Golf outings, we had almost 100% retention of golf outings from last year, which we're very pleased about and we've actually booked a few new ones. which we're very pleased about, and we've actually booked a few new ones for this year, one in May, which is terrific, 'cause that's a good year, a good month to have an outing. So, we're looking to improve on that. Non-banquet, non-golf-related banquet functions are showing somewhat of an increase as they work very hard to fill the facility with some smaller events, maybe even two at a time with how our banquet room is set up, so that would improve that issue. In junior golf, I touched on it briefly, our goal this year is to try to get, try to get fifty kids in there if we can do it. We're trying to make it more fun, get into physical fitness and things like that with the kids. And so, we hope that maybe we'd have some success with that this year. So, we're working a lot with the PGA on that type of thing. Capital outlay requests, hard to imagine, but our clubhouse is eighteen years old, and a lot of this capital, capital improvements are focused on, on the clubhouse and our buildings and that type of things, and a thirty-year-old midway. Number one on that is midway improvements, the bathrooms, we need to update those bathrooms, fixtures in there and that. And the service area where the people come in and pick up their food, order their food and pick their food up, that needs to be improved upon, that type of thing. Number two, clubhouse flooring, we've done the banquet and the entryway, we need to dress lounge locker rooms, golf shop, that type of thing with new carpeting. This carpeting is still original from ninety-six, so it's done its job. Unfortunately, on number three, some of our banquet chairs are also original, and some of them are up to seventeen years old. We need to, because we've upgraded everything there, we need to upgrade our furnishings in the banquet area. We need to get all our chairs the same. Right now, we have a mishmash. We tend to buy ten, fifteen a year, depending, you know, whether we need them or not, or chairs break or whatever. So, to get all the, all the same chairs would be very important to us. That on top of, then we also have fifteen expandable tables that we use for restaurants, fish fry in particular, that type of thing, that can expand into rounds. We need to replace those tops, the laminate on those tops are in bad shape and not repairable. We tried repairing them once before, not much success. But we can save the bases, so we don't have to buy new bases. Just have to buy the tabletops, put them on our existing bases and go with that.
Can we sell the old chairs?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Can we sell the old chairs?
Yeah, we can do that. We can sell, we have some old chairs to sell and that type of thing, yeah, we could probably, we'll talk to the police, I think they're really good at selling excess merchandise and stuff. We'll pick their brain and get that done, you bet. Clubhouse HVAC unit, this will be, this is a continuing of a program we started about four years ago. We've replaced four units, this will be our fifth unit this year, probably either be the golf shop or the, or the office unit, HVAC unit, we'll take a look at, see which one is in the most need of replacing. We'll have three left to do after this, so we're still working on that. And again, these units have actually lasted pretty long. Ice machine in the basement, original to the facility. In the basement, this particular ice machine is a big unit, it does service our beverage carts and our on-course coolers, and is a backup for the midway and also the clubhouse. Heat pump in the basement, we have two heat pumps, and in August, neither one were working. We replaced one on an emergency basis, and we wanna replace the other one. So, we're running on one heat pump for, to heat the whole basement on the clubhouse. So, we wanna get them both replaced, so we'll do one here, probably in the fall, right before the cold season hits again. Power washer, that's just, our power washer's kinda shot, we're living on borrowed time with that thing. It's used every day during the golf season to wash carts and that type of thing. We talked about family golf, number nine, we talked about family golf with the kids and beginners trying to get out there and play. We're actually gonna order and, order tee markers just for that purpose, to put out in the fairways, to shorten the golf course up, even thinking about putting together a real simple scorecard for the kids and that type of thing, too. So, they would have their own set of tees out there, and adults could play, the adult beginners or anybody else who might be comfortable at playing the course from a shorter yardage would use those, we think that's really good. And number ten, a beverage cart, look into lease a beverage cart, as opposed to spending twenty thousand dollars, but lease it.
Is that, is that beverage cart gonna be out every day?
It's out every day when, yeah. Well, it's not out every day. If it's fifty degrees out, no, it's not out, 'cause we're not doing anything off of that. But if the weather's good and the people are there, it is out.
Wouldn't people buy coffee or hot chocolate?
And we, that's hard to maintain hot anything on that thing. When you're driving around.
You just gotta a cooler?
Well, thankfully, we have the snack bar out there that's open every day, all the time, where they can get the coffee.
Okay, but in the summertime, when it's not fifty degrees?
It's out.
And it's not a golf outing, we're gonna have a beverage cart?
We have it out there.
I'm sorry?
We do have it out there, in the summertime.
No, you don't.
Huh?
No, you don't.
No? All right. It's scheduled, I mean, I look at the schedule, it's scheduled to go out every day, and it usually is out there.
Well, it's hiding when I'm out there.
Is it? Well, I tell you what, we're gonna keep an eye on that for you.
Okay.
And we will make sure that we'll get it over on your part of the golf course, that's for sure.
I had another question. Why do we need a heat pump in the basement?
That's the cart area, the, that encompasses the whole cart storage area, encompasses the whole cart storage area, the area with the coolers, all of our walk-in coolers and everything are down there, an employee break area, bathrooms down there, the boiler down there and that type of thing, yeah, that's all down there.
I thought it was just for the, for your golf carts. And I say, why do we have to keep the golf carts heated all the way?
Well, we do work on the golf carts in the winter time, and it is nice to have it at about fifty-five degrees down there, so. Got the beverage cart, that'll be a good thing, that'll be a nice presentation for us at the golf course. Moving on, professional development, the only thing still left in the budget is these local seminars, clinics and workshops for myself and my assistant, the PGA merchandise show and associated education programs are, have been taken out of the budget this year. Professional associations, same as it's been for years and years, that has not changed. I think one went up twenty-five dollars this year, and I think that was the only change in professional associations. Other than that, we can move on. If you have no other questions for me on the grounds, or on the golf part of it, we can have Kevin just briefly go over the grounds, purchases and that type of thing. It'll be page thirteen.
Okay, we're on the capital outlay request, two thousand fourteen and fifteen. The number one item is a PTO-driven rough mower. Our current unit is ten years old, we use that thing just to mow rough, and we use it every day, it runs about six hundred and fifty hours a year, it's ten years old, so that's six hundred and five hundred hours of use. It's about double its life expectancy, keep it going as long as we can, but it's at its expectancy. We also use that to, we put leaf mulching attachment on it, we use it to mulch leaves in the fall, very much utilized. Number two item is a walk-behind leaf blower, we have a fleet of these, this is the oldest one. If you look at the date, it's nineteen seventy-eight, we're still trying to get it, get it by, but it's certainly put in its life. It's actually one of the original pieces of equipment, still in use, in the village of Bartlett Hills, seventy-eight, so. Do you have any other questions, or can we move on? Professional development, same as the other departments, a big-ticket item, the golf course, the national golf course, that's been not funded. All the other training, professional development are local, try to continue to do those. Professional association detail, all the same, no changes. And we'll go to page sixteen, write-down certifications, total, well, total budget went down.
Oh, yeah, it did go down two percent, yeah, there you go. Going back to grounds maintenance real quick, there are professional development down at the bottom of that page, just wanted you to see that's State of Illinois pesticide license, all of our guys that put any type of applications to the golf course by law have to have that license. So, they're very good at maintaining that certification and that accreditation.
I guess, moving forward to page twenty-five, then, the professional development detail, there really is a couple items not funded on there, kinda boils down to just the online BAC training we're doing for the alcohol service in the, at the golf course, they're able to do that online, fourteen dollars seventy-five cents per employee, they're getting that done, and we're reimbursing them as, their licensure, I believe, lasts for a year, so it's gotta get done on a regular basis now, but it certainly is easier for them being That's really about it, there's no personnel, there's no capital we have in, or that we're requesting, we're just working on filling dates and working on some value-added items for the restaurant and the banquet facility for the upcoming season.
And I can just touch on the range real quick, we have no expenditures for the range at all as far as equipment or anything like that, so that's it. That's pretty much our budget. If you have any further questions, we'd be more than happy to answer those.
I think one of the comments I would make is just trying to, this has been an ongoing battle with these particular entities, trying to create a way to play enough rounds, get enough banquets, whatever. I guess my main question is your employee, number of employees, you've got, all but ten of them are seasonal employees, and just from a business sense, it seems to me that everything about the golf course is seasonal. The weddings are seasonal, the golf is seasonal. I know that the village has to figure out a way to make this thing work in order for us to continue down this road. We can't, I know we've talked about ways to expand it, I think that's a great idea, I think that's gonna add some viability to additional functions. But I think we've gotta think a little bit deeper into the personnel here when you've got a seasonal business, you aren't, you aren't competing against anything private, we've gotta figure out a way to make this thing work, 'cause it's a great course, I'm a golfer, I know that, there's good facility out there, you're not competing against the expenses that a private club has, because they don't have any taxes. So, we've got, I'm just curious as to all of these full-time people, when they're not on their season, what's going on?
Well, in Kevin's particular area as an example, his guy's rehab, he only has three people besides himself working. So, you know, they're snowplowing, they're doing things like that, but more importantly, they're rehabbing every piece of equipment, every piece of furniture on the golf course that we own, they spend the whole winter rehabbing every one of those pieces, and that takes all winter to do. That's as an example. As far as the golf shop is concerned, it's myself and my assistant Phil. We're there five and a half days a week in the offseason, sometimes six, sometimes seven, depending on the activities that are going on there in the offseason. We learned a number of years back that you cannot afford to miss any phone calls in the winter time. It could be an outing, could be a ten thousand dollar outing. If they don't talk to a human being on that phone call, they may go to the next golf course and book it there. We do, we, again, this year, as an example this year, we spent time negotiating with our leagues and negotiating with our permanent tee time people and putting programs together and things like that. Are we there from morning till night like we are in the summer? No, but we're there, and it's viable, and Paul and his staff, they are there seven days a week. And I can't tell you how many phone calls they get, even today. It actually got me nuts today, they had so many phone calls today, you know, requesting information on the facility. And plus, you also have certain times of the year, like Christmas time, Valentine's Day, things like that, where people tend to get, in our case, get engaged, and boy, the period after that tends to be really busy time. And are they there from morning till night? No, but they're, we're there during normal working business hours. I think.
You have winter weddings.
Oh, yeah, we have winter weddings, we have parties and all that type of thing, sure.
Well, and again, I'm just trying to understand this, because I've ran several businesses against competitive, private industries, and I've had to figure out ways to construct my personnel, so they aren't sitting around, so I'm not paying them for sitting around. I'm not saying that that's happening, I just wanna understand this. I just wanna understand what happens on the seasonal employees that are working full-time on their offseason, and I don't get it. I don't think too many people understand that. Maybe I'm the only one.
Really, so the four of us, between I'm a chef, sous chef, myself, and I am married that's doing banquets, you know, let's go to, let's go to November, we still usually do three or four weddings in November, we'll do a girls' night out, it takes an immense amount of planning to go into to do that. In December, between the Bartlett, Bartlett High School, the magical show, the probably ten, twelve events in December, we do those above and beyond, we still do weddings in December and everything. Come January, you know, we create events, we do the bridal vendor show, the craft and vendor show, those are all events that take a lot of time to plan and get people in, to expose people to the facility, hopefully they're gonna pay off with events later on in the summer and everything as you're going through, 'cause once you get them in and you do a nice job with it and they like what's going on there, that's important. December through February are huge booking inquiry months, based on people getting engaged over the holidays all the way up through, all the way up through Valentine's Day. That's when you're filling a lot of your dates in for the current year, and the eager beavers are going out the one or two years beyond over in there. That's the time that we're going to local, little local food and vendor shows and working on contract pricing with people and everything, when we're comparing banquet menus and pricing with other facilities to make sure we're priced accordingly for the product that we offer, that's actually almost, it's the same amount of business, we just go ahead and shift from our activity of carrying out the events and the golf outings to a different priority to set your golf season up coming.
That is, you bring up something that is a question along with the fees, is that's the inquiries, and that would be something I'd be interested in knowing, where are these inquiries coming from? Are we keeping track? Are they coming from people looking you up on the internet? Are they coming from the yellow pages? Are they coming from, where are they coming from?
We do a real good job on analyzing, and we can get a report for you, 'cause we do that on a regular basis, specifically from like Google Analytics and all the stuff that you can go through, we know which wedding pages, how long they're staying on the wedding pages, we have that information for you. The phone calls that are coming in can be based on what print material is out there, what websites are out there that they're getting them in from, and a lot of it comes from probably, yeah, but it's word of mouth, based on us doing a great job with the events, a lot of referrals and everything from graduations to weddings to kins and years, whatever, it's pretty much across the board, but the very best thing we're doing is all the great reviews we have online. They're coming from various places.
Okay, various places. Now, do you, does the facility, is the golf facility and the banquet facility have its own website? Do we have?
Yes.
And is it up and running?
It's up and running.
Why don't you describe how it works, how your blog works, your website, some of the things you're doing, your locations stand for?
I actually brought the last page of the website. I brought the last page of the website with me, which kind of explains a lot of stuff that we just talked about over in there. But at bartlett hills dot com, it's a website that they kinda co-mingle both golf and banquets and everything else at the same time, bartlett hills dot com. Across the top, you can specifically pick what you're in there to take a look at, whether it be golf, make online tee times, weddings, banquets, you name it, news links, contacts, it's all in there with a great amount of pictures and everything else, with specific phone numbers to the golf shop and everything else. Going down through there, besides all the menus that are on there and everything else that are part of the, part of the website and the online booking and everything, a bunch of website reference links where, you know, we're on Twitter, we're on Facebook, we're got the blog that people go ahead and respond on, then there's a number of hits located on here, too. Twitter, thirty-four thousand hits. The blog that we have actively going is eight forty-two. The number of times people looked at Bartlett Hills videos on YouTube, twelve hundred, and so on, it's at the bottom of the website that is in there. So, we have a pretty good handle on kinda where the people are coming from.
And that's what I'm asking, is I'm basically.
And they kinda guide us to where we need to go ahead and do our marketing.
And that's what I'm asking, is basically a non-golfer, I just wanna know that this is in place and that it's working.
It's in there, and it is working, it's a very good tool, and it's a nice website as you compare it to other facilities that have the stuff out there.
And going back to the staffing issue, we, we have three spots that we've never filled, one was head chef position, which is no longer existing, Kevin hasn't had an assistant superintendent for a number of years, that's been left open. We no longer have a secretary anymore, when that person left that. anymore. When that person left, that, we never refilled that one. And my second assistant position has been open for about, for years. Actually, I think we just ended up taking it out of the budget. So, as we have the opportunity to, and it's not hurting our level of service and that type of thing, we have pared down, especially the full-time, the full-time staff.
You have on your head chef, you have one. You don't have a head chef, or you do have a head chef?
Well, it's.
You have a sous chef and a head chef on here.
We have one less person in the kitchen. We have one less full-time person in the kitchen than what we used to have.
What is a sous chef?
Huh?
It's the backup.
A sous chef is like the backup?
Yeah.
The under chef.
Yeah.
They make sous.
It's the sauce chef.
Yeah.
And the reason why I was asking is because we're going to spend another, you know, we're spending about thirteen thousand in additional advertising and marketing promotions. So, I'm just wondering, and Paul's already outlined what some of the stuff that you're doing to advertise and market. I'm just picturing a lot of downtime on the offseason, where we could be doing a lot of this marketing. And it's mostly from a standpoint of, I love the golf course, and I think it's a great facility, and I just, I think that there's such a huge opportunity for it. I just think that, you know, there's going to be, there's continual aggravation about, not necessarily staffing or anything else, just about continually falling a little shy of paying for itself. And that's the elephant in the room, and that's really a problem. And it can't continue to do that. We've got to figure out proactive, maybe hard-choice ways to get that to work, you know? I think everybody likes it. I love it. I love the course. But there's got to be some hard choices now we're down the road here to make sure that we can maintain that facility until my daughter's ready to get married. Ten years from now.
No, we are done.
That's all I got.
So, on the eighteenth, then.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
This is all right on board. You will have, I'm sorry.
Next time, we're going to have to bring the dog in, to the dog-friendly area.
Oh, yeah.
Trusty, yeah, trusty shipment wants to have.
To go to the schools.
He could cross-train him.
Cover metal department.
Excellent idea.
Valerie, are you saying we're not meeting on the eleventh, then?
We're not meeting on the eleventh. I thought I said, and we may have.
You may have.
They were elected official time with that, so we canceled that meeting. So, that moves the remaining departments to the eighteenth. And so, that's why we had talked, I would let you know who we got. Today, we will have them building community of golf, finance, and public work, the largest other remaining departments review. And I would propose we do that at the committee level on the eighteenth.
And then if, for some reason, we're not completed, we would have to call an additional meeting in between then and when's the due date's May first?
You don't have to cause additional meeting. You could have that in April.
The first meeting in April.
It's in April.
Because it has to be approved by the last meeting in April to officially.
Over at your house.
Yes.
What are you trying to do?
We just stay till 2:00 AM.
Or we could be like the state and just keep going and going.
Is that all?
I think we're all set then.
Okay, I have an entertaining motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second, moved by trustee Shipman, seconded by the Ranky. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?